Well, it's for you.
Hi, how are you? Good.
That's fine.
Consumption.
Did you wanna?
I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow, if that's okay with you. I can do it now, but I don't wanna repeat everything and then.
Okay.
Have to repeat it again. I can tell you what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I see. Yeah, he's coming with good news. Bill, you had to sit at the big boy table.
Well, I don't know if that's a good thing or bad.
That means we want you close.
Okay, everyone, welcome. We apologize we're late. We had a planning commission meeting that ran over. So. And clerk, roll plate, he's in the line.
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay, agenda item one, dispense.
Before we, before we do that, Commissioner, I'd like to reveal Danzo first.
You must have some good information.
I've got information that was brought to me that I think we all need to be aware of. So Mr. Danzo, based on some of the calculations you've been asked to do and what you found, did you present to the board where you addressed them?
Sure. What I'll say, Commissioners, is as you guys know, Prosecutor's Office, Prosecutor Watkins serves on the Budget Commission. I'm generally his designee as one of his assistants on that. And it had come up before about, are we sure about the numbers? And, and I told you, and I still believe in absolutely, I trust what the auditor has given us. I trust that what we've looked at in that, let's say sixty-four million without the clerk of courts money is the, this the number that is our expected available resources for this year, right? And that's, that's not, I'm not backing off of that at all. I believe that to be the case. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight to the board is that, you know, there are some reserves in the county's fund, and I think you guys are aware of that. But what I wanted to just bring to your attention is that in the reserves that we keep, you know, it is the commissioner's option, and just to make it clear, it is the commissioner's option to look at that, to determine whether or not they believe those reserves are too little, too much, just right. And if the commissioners do believe that perhaps the reserves are more than they need to be, to weather shortfalls that potentially come in with that estimated revenue, that is something that you guys can look at and consider. Now, again, I don't profess to be a budget finance wizard. I, I don't know the answer. That's for something that you guys, perhaps with your, you know, input from people that, that can help you with budgetary matters, could tell you better from an actuarial perspective, you know, things like that. But I did wanna just kinda let you guys know that, you know, that's, that, that money, that sixty-four million or sixty-six, if you're going to include the clerk of courts donation essentially back to the general fund, does not include that amount that's traditionally been held by the county commissioners as reserves to weather shortfalls, to weather, you know, emergencies, things like that.
Can you give us a breakdown of what that reserve money is?
Sure, there's, that, that money is essentially carryover balances in, I think the way the auditor phrases it, which is, I think, correct, related to the general fund. So in other words, that includes the undivided sales tax carryover. It includes the justice sales tax carryover. It includes casino tax carryover. It includes the MCO sales tax. Now, the, the MCO sales tax, just to point out to you guys, that was a one-time payment that was given to political subdivisions when the state got rid of the Medicare sales tax.
Managed care.
Yeah, years ago. So that's not going to be replenished, just to be clear. That, that is not. The other of those funds are, in theory, replenished. Now, just again, try to explain it as clearly as I can. The expected revenue from each one of those funding sources is included in that sixty-four to sixty-six million that you guys are using for your budgetary number. What is not included is that carryover balance. So that is, again, and I, I would never suggest that you use all of it because that could put the county in a really precarious position going forward. I guess what I am saying, though, is you can look at those balances. Those are in the reports. They are in the Budget Commission certification to you guys as far as what those totals are. What I, I guess I am suggesting is you could look at those to determine whether or not you think they are more than we need in reserve. Again, maybe less than we need in reserve or just right, but that's something that, that you guys could look at. And I just wanted to be sure that we all are aware that those, those balances are there. And again, for anybody in the, in the public listening, you know, that, that there should, in my opinion, absolutely be a reserve. The question is, how much?
Does, so what, what are those figures? How much is that? And then give me a breakdown.
Just the, the most recent report that I have, that was, I think, again, also on the one that was sent to you guys, is undivided sales tax, ending balance was about six and a half million, about one and a half for justice sales tax, about two and a half million for casino, and about four point four, four point five for the MCO sales tax. And again, keep in mind that MCO, when it's gone, it's gone. It's not coming back. So I think that ultimately that amounts to right around thirteen, fourteen million, just with rough math. And again, you know, when we talk about projections, the, the rest of the, the money that we've, is the Budget Commission projected, is subject to change. You know, we could see the sales tax not come in as high as we expect, and that's where that buffer is useful. Some counties have, i- it's in the statute, some counties have what they call reserve balance account for budget stabilization. We don't have one of those here in Trumbull County. Could create one, and that's to, to manage the, the shifting tides of budget income outflow. That, I will tell you, is statutorily capped. If you have one of those funds, it is statutorily capped at a particular amount. And I, I'd have to double check on that exact amount, but I believe it's either five percent of last year's revenues, or it is one-sixth of last year's expenditures, but it's statutory. It's, there's a, there's a provision on that. Again, because we don't have one of those budget stabilization accounts, this has always traditionally been the way, as I understand it's been done in Trumbull County, is those carryover balances have been our budget stabilization and our rainy day fund, our emergency fund, so to speak. So it's important that we have that in one way or another, but I think it's just something that, that I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page with and understood as the, as these budget discussions go forward and are hopefully finalized relatively soon. It, it's something that, that could be looked at.
So we're technically, so there's fourteen million. If we were to use half of that, we, we would fill every hole we had in the county. If we would use a portion of that, even, even twenty percent of that, then that would prevent any layoffs to the auditor's office, any layoffs in clerk of courts, and, and be able to fund at least to the levels where people wore last year without even the talk of any laughs. That's why, Commissioners, I urged nobody to jump goofy, nobody to jump the gun, nobody to start making crazy cuts right away and scaring people because this process was not done yet. We didn't turn over every rock. And this information is what we had asked for in previous meetings. I don't think we got until, until you were able, as Budget Commission member, to bring those figures forward.
Say, Commissioner, and I don't wanna, you know, I don't, I don't wanna, I wanna be clear that this is information that was out there. You know, I just, you know, it's, there's been nothing, yeah, hidden or anything. It was, it was given to the board and it was given to, you know, through the Budget Commission and through, I believe, these reports that the auditor generates. I guess the purpose of my discussion on this was more just to, to make sure that we all understand that and that we're on the same page.
If I may.
Yeah.
This is where the auditor needs to be here to tell us what she would believe would be an appropriate amount of carryover to either withhold or to delegate. I mean, we knew that, we were told, but we weren't positively sure at that point in time. We've been hearing, yes, maybe it's there, maybe it's not. Now you confirm it's there, so we know that. So now, Commissioners, what is the appropriate amount to delegate? Where's our auditor to?
Commissioners, Alex Stephen Johnson Bush in Resources Department. The auditor has, has made you aware of this. I, I just wanna be very clear. This has been in the reports. This is nothing new. We have been provided these reports. We have seen these reports, okay? So I wanna be perfectly clear before we get ourselves into even more scarier territory because we do have, of course, an auditor. There's an agenda coming up where, so let's be clear. These numbers were always there. The six point five, the one point four, I just double checked a bill. You were spot on, obviously, and right there. This was our first time attending a budget commission. What is the right?
Meeting, yeah.
Yeah. But the, the actual numbers are always provided to the board commissioners. So there's the nine twenty-one, the nine twenty-eight, the casino tax, I can't remember what that one is, and the MCO. Auditor Reuter has consistently said that we have five million dollars awarded in the MCO. We spent five hundred thousand dollars on the valley edition. You knew that. So you know that there's four point five remaining. She has also consistently said that the casino tax, you know, is this and so on and so forth. However, what I heard her say very loud and clear that I think might have been missed, and I'm not sure, is that if we don't carry a substantial carryover in reserves and have so many months of an operating balance in reserve, we could go into what's called a fiscal distress, okay? We have not been able to identify what that number is. Is it two months operating salary? Is it three months operating salary? Is it four? Is it five? Is it six? I don't know. That would be an audit question. However, fourteen million, although it sounds like a lot, Commissioners, look how much a one-year operating salary is. Look at your budget, okay? So for example, we know as of right now that it cost, last year it cost us seventy million to run this county. That fourteen million isn't gonna go very far. God forbid there's some sort of fiscal distress. So, yes, you probably may be able to use some of that reserve, but to, to just kinda carte blanche say, you know, we have fourteen million to use, that would be extremely, extremely not strategic.
And I would agree with that. And, and the other thing is, is where is that sweet spot?
We have to.
Where do we need to be? I, I don't, we're, we're committed. The Commissioners don't know that.
Well, before you lay off, before you declare emergencies and the sky's falling, we need to look at that.
That I agree with.
I agree. I just don't want it by any means, you know, I don't want anybody to think, whoa, we have a pot of fourteen million. I mean, that's.
But it's taxpayer money and there's somewhere that's sitting stagnant. Now, granted, it is collecting interest. You know, it is there, it's in a savings account per se, and we're working out of our checking account, but every now and then, every household may need to dip in their savings once in a while to get through a little rough patch.
Yeah, and, and Bill Danzo, again, I just wanna, I wanna be clear. I agree. I'm not suggesting the commissioners should or need to spend all or a big portion of it. I just want you guys to have, make sure that we all understand what this is.
What it is, yeah.
It's there. We, we didn't real.
I agree, we all knew it was there. Well, I, I think.
I personally did know.
I think what, what H R Alex is saying, I think I kinda agree with her. I think we can use some of it.
Some, yeah.
I don't think we can dip seven billion out of there. I think we'd be in trouble.
So I think we.
Who knows best?
I think what we need to do is.
Well, I think we know best.
Well, I mean, doesn't the auditor, I mean.
Look at it and see where, where we can give a little extra to and go from there.
And I think this is one where we work really closely with CCAO to figure how other counties, you know, how much is typical to be left in reserve? How much is typical, you know, is it one month, like I said, operating expenses? Is it two? Is it three? But, you know, we do have to have a healthy reserve. You, you do. Otherwise, guys, the county just ceases to exist, right? So, I mean, you cannot take all that fourteen million. Again, the board, you can take one, two, I don't know, whatever you look at and decide. But just be cautious in what you're doing and knowing that dipping into that reserves is taking away from your safety net for the future.
We, we did question that early on, six meetings ago. And nobody stepped up, especially the auditor, to give us an idea about a number that would be appropriate. If that's there, okay, is the number a million? Is it two million? And keep twelve million on reserve? I don't know.
Well, what I would say to Bill Danzo again, Prosecutor's Office, what I will say, though, i- in, the auditor would say the same thing is we actually did have to dip into that reserve last year. So there is a, there was a deficit last year, let's put it that way. So that's where, again, it could be that that fourteen is appropriate in everybody's mind. I'm not saying it's not. So I just, you know, it's not like we accumulate, we're accumulating more every year.
We're not, we're stagnant.
So there, there's.
Well, I just dipped in there last year.
I couldn't answer that.
Yeah, I think that, so basically, there was a list provided in the meeting of all those expenses. So there was a pretty large list of stuff that, where they had realized that there was a, there was a gap. It was a, no, it was, you know, let me print it out. There was a list that was given of, the sheriff got one point two million to cover payroll. You know, it was that list of encumbrances that they had to dip into reserves to make sure that they were able to close out the year because we were short in areas. Let me go grab that list.
Yeah, thank you.
And I got that from going to that meeting. So had we not, you know, the commissioners need to, somebody needs to go to that meeting at all times because that's where all this information is coming from, truly. We're listening. So although it's emailed to you, an email with a bunch of numbers really means nothing. There needs to be context behind that email, and the only way to get that context is by going and, and listening and hearing. And I think it was unbeknownst to us that this was even really hap- you know what I mean? I mean, it was a meeting that had been happening, but luckily, through your guys' training at CCAO, you know, I mean, it's new. You guys are new commissioners. We need to do, I think we need to work better together with, you know, our partners, and they need to work with us, and we all need to work together so we understand all of this collectively. Nobody coming in off the street would know any of this. These numbers are large. Funding sources are different. We need to work together.
When we have to know the big picture, they said, we're using a butter knife to turn a screw and get a screwdriver in the door bars. And we, and now they're sitting there, we didn't know it was there.
Well, we knew it was there, we just scared it. But the key is, we gotta find out how much money, we can probably use some out of that.
You know, all, all we're talking to, Commissioner, is some. When we're looking at the difference.
Another million dollars could make a big, big.
Well, three hundred thousand in the auditor's office could stop it. If, if we get, that would be back to where she was last year. Uh, good prevent cuts. Board of Elections, we already know. I see that Mr. Alberini's here. We already know we cut way deeper than we should, we, we should have there. We know when election time comes, we're gonna have to make up a little bit of a difference there.
And we cut ourselves, you know.
We cut ourselves too much.
Utilities and everything here.
Well, and, but there are people screaming with the other, with the two million, spend all that first before anything went off. Well, if we got reserves sitting here somewhere, I'm sure they're gonna be thinking the same thing somewhat that, if you got a twenty dollar bill in your pocket, you don't borrow ten bucks from somebody. Some people do.
But getting back to what I said, six meetings ago, we knew that. But the auditor said, no, you can't, you can't cut into this.
We're just gonna have to take another bulk out of this. That definitely's gonna change some of it.
Commissioners, I also wanna bring up another point that, though I, I certainly think that you can speak to the auditor and hopefully get information there. There, the board also does have statutory authority to hire what the statute calls a fiscal consultant. I know that, for example, in another area, the commissioners are actually required to hire an actuary to prepare a report on the health insurance.
Timber, yeah.
Fund.
So once a year.
So I don't know if it's maybe, if this is something, though I know it's another expense, I don't know if it's something that the commissioners could also, you know, choose to maybe hire a, whether it's a, an actuary or somebody with some, some outside perspective to, to, you know, prepare some sort of report based on financial. Again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting the auditor couldn't help with this. I'm just saying that if the commissioners wanted to get maybe a, a fresh set of eyes, there is a possibility of that in the statute, I believe.
So Commissioners, every year, buildings was correct. I have to go out because we are self-insured. We have to have a third party, not internal party, a third-party individual audit done on our self-actuary. It's called a self-actuary report for self-insured health insurance. It's fifteen hundred dollars. I pay, you know, a gentleman, every year I, I allocate it to my budget. It's the same every year. Certified public accountant outsider comes in and audits to make sure that our self-actuary report, that our health insurance is in healthy, stable condition, so on and so forth. So that's what you were referring to.
Similar, yeah.
The board has.
No, we look at the whole county, every department, or just?
Well, that would just depend on the, the scope, I think, that the commissioners wanted. I, I think, I guess what I was talking about more so is for help in maybe figuring out what an appropriate healthy reserve would be. But if you wanted to, you know, yeah, if you wanted to go with a, you know, if you wanted to have that person explore even deeper into the stuff, I suppose that's something that could be done. It's gonna add to the expense, I think, the board's gonna have with doing that. But it's, I think that, you know, again, the statute is fairly broad when it says fiscal or management consultants, so.
And we have more, Mark. That's your specialty, your line of work, where you come from, the finance field. What, what would you recommend with something like that?
I, I agree. I kinda agree with Bill. Probably should have somebody look at it and determine what, what most counties keep in reserve. I mean, have you been, I would probably look back over the last three to five years and see how much of that reserve we've used on an average percentage basis. And I would factor that into, into it also, and then maybe looking forward if, if, say, you end up with seventy million this year, how, how much going forward percentage-wise may so I would divide it out on a percentage basis. Here's, this, this, this would probably carry us for five years. And so here, we, we got this leftover. We could probably use this amount without a current problem.
So Commissioners, to just.
More banning shares.
Wrap this up. Last year, we dipped into our reserves to the tune of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine fifty-two point four eight out of nine twenty-one. And that included multiple projects listed. I can read them off, or you can just, I can give you this email, but, and this was sent to the board of commissioners. And then on, out of the nine twenty-eight, which was the FOJ dedicated sales tax, they were non-estimated chipping weight, the cash balance at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-four point nine six. So between the nine twenty-one and the nine twenty-eight, you rough, the board carryover roughly expended about a million dollars, dipped into reserves of about a million dollars.
Did it show what the starting balance was then when they did that?
I'd have to do more work. This was just the email notifying you guys that, you know, of all these projects that were wanting to be done. And again, I'm, I'm not here to tell the board what to do, but there was some significant projects in there. I mean, significant. So what we need to be doing is be more either made abreast, or we need to get ourselves more familiar. I mean, every project that you approve or say okay to is just chipping away at reserves. So I mean, like significantly large amounts, you know, did we need to do? I guess what I'm saying, board, is we need to start looking at projects and saying, is this a need or is this a want? Because at the end of the day, it's coming off our balance, so.
Were there projects there that we're gonna have to pay for out of this year? Or were those all paid out of last?
They all should have been, yeah. So they're all.
So there's no.
So this is a new year, fresh start, yeah, which is good.
Right, yeah, right, absolutely.
Good way to look at it, you know?
Bill Danzo, again, Prosecutor's Office, and again, I, no way am I suggesting what the board should do, but, you know, one of the things to think about when, in light of those projects is that, you know, if the board were to, if the board were to still try to say, you know, we're gonna try to have somewhat of a moratorium on capital projects to help our budget be reduced, but we're, we're gonna explore, you know, how much might be available elsewhere. You know, those are things, you know, it could be that, that thing where you consider sort of a dual approach to how it's handled. Again, that's, that's the board's call. That's the board's decision how you wanna handle all of that.
Oh, I, I, I think it's safe to say the commissioners would absolutely look at that carryover and will delegate appropriately, what we can. I mean, to avoid the layoffs, to avoid these cut in hours. The right amount, though. I don't, I don't know what that amount is.
I think when this meeting's over, the three of us should each go to five or six counties and call them and find out what they're carrying over in reserve and, and do comparative, reach out to CCAO, talk to other counties and see what their profit percentage is, what they keep in rainy day funds or carryover. But, but if there's money sitting there, again, I gotta say, I don't think the first thing you do is start going and start cutting services to the public when we've got the public's money sitting in there that they've paid in their taxes and, and whatever tax to get there to provide services.
I don't disagree with that. Sure you don't, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can use some of it. I think there's no question that we can use some of it. Just, just how much?
Not to use it as a Band-Aid, but to use it as an investment into our own future.
And then hopefully our, our amounts can increase.
We need to finalize this budget by the twenty-sixth, I believe. Is that correct?
Let me ask you a question. If we take some of that money out of it, so, and our, our sales tax comes in a little higher, then can we put that money back into reserves?
The way it's worked, and again, I, I will, I'll try to answer this the best I can. It's to my understanding, the way that's worked is that, that's how we've gotten to the carryover so far. So yes, I, I think that so far in the past in Trumbull County, the way that that's happened is if extra sales tax revenue comes in, for example, that, that will just sort of sit in that undivided or justice sales tax account and lessen until, the, the extra beyond what's been budgeted will sit in there and as, as an overage and lessen until the commissioners then have a resolution transferring that to the general fund for use. So, yeah, it, it will accumulate in there if there's an overage. Now, that is where we kind of then have to talk about how that's gonna work in the future because in the past, what we've done is the Budget Commission has issued an increase in the estimated resources that the commissioners can then reallocate. So, you know, if that's gonna be used as a reserve instead, you know, we'll have to have maybe some other discussions about how that reserve would look in the future. For example, would, would the commissioners want to create a reserve balance account for budget stabilization? In addition to some of the other things that you guys have done in the past, there's other reserve balance accounts that can be created for long-term improvements, for things like that that, you know, if you've got those extra funds coming in that aren't immediately needed to meet service to payroll or things like that, that the commissioners could consider longer term. The trick is, it all just requires money, unfortunately, and that's, that's in short supply, but those are all options.
So, Bill, if, if the board of commissioners were to, so the certificate, the, the budget review committee has already certified, this is the certified, or we just saw it on three, five, or whenever you certify the actual amounts that could be or potentially spent.
Sure.
For twenty twenty-five. So in the last budget review meeting, that was very clear that they approved the certification. They sent it out, dated three, five was the official date, I believe. If the board of commissioners were to want to dip into those reserves somewhat, whether it be now, well, no, I don't know, whatever they decide, would we have to reamend the certification? Before passing, before even passing the final budget. So we got a lot of steps to take in a week.
I believe so. I, I believe that would be, so the, the first step would likely be the board would, you know, if it chooses, the board would take some of the money from any of those funds and pass a resolution transferring it to the general fund, which. Which then the Budget Commission would likely schedule a special meeting at that point to, uh. Amend the estimated resources by that amount, and that would give you then the ability to. Allocate that in your final. Budget that the board, the appropriation resolution that the board would approve. Uh, so there are some moving parts to it, and I, you know, I recognize now the deadline is fast approaching, so. Um, you know, that's something to consider.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say, commissioners, is realistically, you have a meeting today, meeting tomorrow. And a meeting next Tuesday and Wednesday, um. To figure out collectively without, you know, sunshine donations or, or how you want to facilitate all of this, so.
Well, in light of this new thing, we have another special meeting on the budget and. Once we get those figures and.
I'm just making you aware, though, that you're gonna have to, there's, yeah, you're gonna have to have these conversations if it gets out.
What I'm thinking is if they borrowed a million last year, I think it'd be safe, we could at least take a million this year. And see where that puts us.
An extra million will do wonders.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, they borrowed a million last year, so if we took a million this year. I think we're safe to take a million.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manning has reached out to you.
Yes, Mark, Mark, uh, company, I sure saw what you said about, um. Since I don't know county finance, but I don't know if you can do it, but, um. What I would suggest is if, if you can take a million or two million from that, I, I, I would put it in proportion to however you need to do it, that. You would take it. But we know that this is probably a conservative estimate, sixty four million dollars, right? So we may have enough to get by. Well, that million is gonna earn forty to fifty thousand dollars sitting in the account. So I would look at it maybe. Down the road, if you're gonna need it to take it at that point, instead of injecting it into five, this way. It's just a thought I do there. The other thing that Don made a good point about is, you know, if you're calling these. Uh, other commissioners at the other places, make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, because you don't want a county that has double the citizens and. They're saying, hey, you need to have this much.
Right, right.
No, it has to be false. I agree.
Or you could just call CCAO, we could just call CCAO and ask, guys, what is the collective amount of. Reserves that you should have for accounting our studies, instead of, no offense, but instead of wasting your time and. Maybe looking at counties that aren't even part of hold of us. Or you also have to understand, you're gonna call Mahoney County, their sales tax is set up different. Their levies are set up different, their special assessments are set up different. You, you can't, in the amount of time that we have. You need a bottom line figure. What is the general amount of money we need to have reserves?
See, the only thing about leaving it in there, and it has a good idea, but an interest, but then, you know, we could only pass a budget with the money that we have. So I, I think we need to draw that out, put that in there.
Well, that's what I'm trying to warn you of. So right now, you only have sixty four, okay? That's what they certified, that's what the Budget Review Committee certified as our. As our funds were available appropriations, excuse me.
But as I said too at the last meeting. We're gonna reevaluate this thing throughout the year, and that's where I brought the, the thing up. Third, fourth quarter, when we get in there, we start to unload, there are reserve things like this that we can draw from. At that point, I don't know if we can balance the budget up to them, but that's what I said, don't lay anybody off yet, don't jump goofy. And scare the hell out of the citizens and create a big issue where there is. But they have, it absolutely has, and, and a couple departments.
We have a looming lawsuit. So we're, we're gonna have to think about.
Do you wanna just address this at a, at a budget meeting? You guys.
Well, I think we need to do research on that, but I think at this point where we are now.
Tell everybody to hold on, don't delay anything.
That's what I would say. Hold on for until we reevaluate, and we said, we never said this is a done process yet. And we had four meetings and things changed every meeting. We, we didn't certify anything yet, and that's what. People run and road, run and renegade. That's not the proper time for that, and I understand people need to prepare, they wanna do that, that's okay, that's on them with their departments. They're gonna be judged by their own people, their own, the. It don't react yet, work together with us, we're all on the same team, we need to be growing in the same direction. And we need to lead it from here, from the Commissioners Board, what's gonna happen.
Thank you, Mr. Danza, um.
Right, I got a question, I apologize. Mike Salmo, Chicago. Uh, are you talking about reviewing every quarter? How often are you doing?
We're gonna, we're gonna follow this thing along as much as we possibly can.
Um, I. It's been a long time. I was taught.
That's what we're gonna do.
That's, no, that was part I did not, that's, I, I wasn't trying.
Now, this is, we're gonna follow this thing through. There's one single person out there who's in jeopardy. Of, of not getting a paycheck or whatever. We, we owe it to the, to them, we owe it to the citizens to follow this thing through, not just. Throw it against the wall and look at it, you know, kick it down the road.
I, I, I sort of think the word side is, no, the good thing about all of this is, yes, we're. We're gonna watch it every month, and I almost feel like I'm standing in front of.
Okay, commissioners, we'll have to do a little green house up for you there.
Really great, and I was just reading a higher vice code. So I'm a pretend lawyer, a real lawyer. Um, I was just wondering when the tax, um, commission did their budget, that they. Three percent allowed contingency reserve.
Well, I, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, I think when you're talking about the three percent contingency, I don't. When we're, we're submitting the, just the overall estimated revenue, I think that would be in the Commissioner's budget, would be a three percent contingency. Uh, which I'm not sure frankly whether the commissioners include that as a line item in the county budget or not.
They can.
But they can. There's a three percent contingency by statute that you can put in for, I think the language is something about any. Uh, expenditure that is not contemplated or not known at the time the budget is made. Uh, and that's, I think, statutory three percent, and then, like I said, if you have a budget stabilization fund, that's another. Five percent or one-sixth, depending on how you calculate that. So those are two statutory methods. For at least setting some sort of a. They call budget stabilization, I'll call it rainy day, but it's sort of rainy day. So yeah, good, good find on that, but. I'm not sure if that's in the line items or not, to be honest.
And also fifty seven point zero. Five point four zero also talks about. The reserve, and I don't know if it's the reserve you're referencing, or if it's something else, because, yeah, I'm just reading, but, um, it. It seems like based on the CCO and, and the higher vice code that there. You said more research to be done. We, I, I recall, I recall Martha saying at a previous meeting that. I, I believe she had said one month reserve, but I don't wanna speak for her, um, was really the standard practice. That would be about, what, six, six million dollars?
I think we had three months, I think we anticipated roughly three months with the, that was, or well, it was fifteen, I thought, or it was one minute, but yeah, you're correct, she did say that. Um, and then commissioners, we do have commissioners contingency fund, Alex, you can join to push in Resources Department. Um, the Commissioners Contingency Fund is here, and there is money in it, just so you know.
Is that above the fourteen day? No, that's including the fourteen day.
No, 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 it's just a, just a little, it's just a little bucket of money that you guys have set aside. Budgeted for in case you were to need to dip into it, but it's nowhere near fourteen million, it's only three hundred thousand as of right now. Yeah, we don't tend to put a lot of monies in there because we don't have a lot of monies to put in there, you know, because obviously. It's, it's dedicated to operating expenses. If you wanna put more money in there, you absolutely can, but you're just pulling that out of your general funds or something else, so, or. How do we want to look at it?
Okay, you know, if we've said before too, this board is gonna lay down roots for our economic future. Not put Band-Aids on cuts from the past, and that's what I think we need to stay focused on, is the moves we make are. Build us to a better future so we don't ever have to address this again. In the, in the near future.
Just, you know, departments still. It cuts with it.
Correct, yeah, correct, right.
Well, uh, table the minutes, um, if you'd like to. I know you're, you're out of time, but here.
Also, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, Dave Bobby, I'm the, uh, jail administrator at the, at your jail. Uh, just wanted to talk to the Commissioner real quick about. I've applied for a grant. Through the Attorney General's Office for, uh, it's the grant, the total is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which I think based on our, uh, what our. Criteria, I think we have a very good chance of getting that. One of the criteria in there, and it wants to talk about sustainability. So I just wanted to come to the Commissioners and ask, you know, if we get this grant. Uh, will you pledge to support the grant at some point? Uh, they're not asking for any matching funds, I'm talking about, uh, any kind of opioid money. That if we, if we have to add any money to this grant. Uh, right now, I don't expect we have to do any of that, so. Um, I just, but I had to put something in there about sustainability, so I just wanted to talk to you guys today. About, will you support this? Can I put it in there? This is what I put, this is the language I put in there. That I have asked the Commissioners to support this grant. So, and that, and that's the only, that's the only thing I really wanna talk about. Um, but I did want to ask, you know, you know, there's all this talk about opioid money, I've got some ideas. That I'd like to pursue with, with the jail. Um, we have a, this is what I found out the last two months. We have a lot of addicted individuals in this jail. We have a lot of mentally ill inmates in this jail. We are providing services. I don't think in my. You know, I'm just a dumb woman from the South Side of Youngstown, we're not doing enough, we need to do more. We can do more. This grant will add almost double the services that we're providing right now. So. I think there's more that we can do, I think with, if, if we can access some of the op-, I don't, I don't even know how to access the opioid money, so that was my question. If we need to access money, what's the process? You know, I have no idea.
We are gonna have a meeting concerning that. With the opioid monies, and there, there's a possibility of more coming in.
Right.
And we have discussed, the Commissioners have discussed. The idea about the jail and how to appropriate some of those funds. Right now, those funds are in the, uh.
We, we have some right now, Commissioner, that. That we gotta report, I think we have like two point two million right, right now. That we could use.
So.
Right, well, I'm not asking for anything now, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I just wanna know how to access it if we.
Well, you would need to ask because we already had discussed. That part of it for that opioids money, right now, April.
No, 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 we have, we have two point two in, in our fund for that.
But in like.
But I think, I think we need to work with the Prosecutor's Office to make sure.
I, I've been, I've, I've worked, uh, I've worked with Lauren in April to create, and. You know, so, so they're aware of this, this is gonna supplement what they're already providing to this.
So we're looking into that, and, uh, hopefully we can appropriate.
Do we need a resolution?
I, I, I do not, I do not, I just, I just wanted to make sure that. Um, when I submit the grant, if somebody from the Prosecutor's Office calls and says, or, you know, the Attorney General's Office says. Hey, we're talking about this grant, that you're aware of what, you know, what I applied for.
Yeah.
I'm not requesting anything at this time, um, just, you know, that you know about it, you support it, and, uh. You know, I think it's, uh, renewable for several years, I think at, at least two or three that I saw in the grant. Um, you know, and I think it, it'll go a long way with this population. Our population, we got here in January, it was two hundred inmates. Well, I think we're at like two eighty-eight yesterday. That's a huge increase, and. Um, you know, we don't add staff, we don't add the recovery staff or the mental health staff. As we, our population goes up, so that same group of people are still dealing with what they were staffed for at two hundred people, so. Um, and you know, a- and I don't know if y'all know this, but these folks aren't going back to Sub-Island. They're coming back to our community, they're coming back to our neighbors, or to people that live here in Trumbull County, and that's where they're going back to. So we, you know, we have a duty and obligation to, to, to try to treat these folks while they're there, while we have a chance to do that before we release them. Or at least provide them the sources and the resources that they need when they get out.
Hundred percent agree, and, and the Commissioners, any, any grants that we can. Take in for any of the departments are welcome, definitely.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie Bond. Um. Commissioners, do you have any other questions before we move forward with the, or discussion? Okay, so we're gonna move forward with our, um, agenda items here. Spends the reading of the workshop on March fourth. Two, go through the bills. Pre-approved twenty twenty five estimated sales tax revenues to general fund. General Bond Retirement Fund three oh one, uh, transfer sales tax to general fund zero zero one will be done monthly. Transfer sales tax of the General Bond Retirement Fund three oh one will be done in April. Uh, for June debt payments, October for December debt payments. As listed. Uh, Commissioners, I don't know what you feel about this one.
I think we ought to take before.
Uh, can we take this off the agenda?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
I would say we take it off.
Yeah.
So I would strike this right now off of the agenda.
We'll see where we're, where we're at, right.
Uh, it's too early to get into something like this, we need to reach out to the auditor, we're trying to say. Work with us, not against us at this point yet.
Commissioners, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, you certainly can do, you know, whatever you want with that, and if you wanna reach out to the auditor, especially. Before tomorrow's meeting, that might be a good plan. Uh, the only thing I would say is that. There is some legal authority, uh, that, that suggests that, from Trumbull County. That suggests that if the Commissioners won't approve that ultimately, and the auditor does want to move forward with it. The next step is a, a potential lawsuit against the board to force the board to approve outside counsel.
She wants to go that route, still cooperating.
I just wanna let you guys know that that's, that's something that could be done in the future.
We'll reach out to the auditor if she will.
Yeah, but if she, she's gonna sue us, then we have to get an outside counsel also, and that's all, takes it all from the budget.
And there goes negotiations back and forth, we're done at that point. I urge her, we're not at that point.
Right, yeah. But if she wants to press on, then we'll have to deal with it.
Okay, five, uh, concede, place on file, I, monthly activities for the Trumbull County Dog Channel. January, February, twenty twenty five. Six, authorize Rick Rehanna's President Board of Commissioners to sign the. Rose Amendment Number Two, the Ohio Department of Youth Service Subsidy Grant. FY two oh two five amendment is necessary for purpose for the realignment of funds to reflect the updated salary schedule. For employees on the grant to provide direct service programming to the youth. Um, Engineers Department's not here today. That happens to me all the time, Gary.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, number seven, the resolution that occurred with our office and two midway closings, um, both of them are gonna occur Wednesday. Uh, tomorrow, first is Oklahoma Black stuff for a cover replacement, second one is tree removal conjunction, bridge replacement of budget on the. Later this spring and summer. And number eight is, uh, to approve our second vacation. The conversion plan, uh, it's gonna more align us, us to have two weeks vacation, one for sick.
Thank you, Gary. Um, Alex, it's you.
Um, Commissioners, uh, number eight was actually discussed by. Mr. Shaper, thank you. Uh, we did submit that on behalf of the Engineers Department. And we appreciate you guys working with us to come down on the numbers, well, we're the board commissioners, so thank you. Uh, number nine is to accept the resignation of probationary dispatcher Dennis Loveless, effective Sunday, March second. Uh, Mr. Loveless felt that the nine one dispatch was just for him while on probation.
Thank you, Alex. One step forward, two steps back.
Story of our lives, Gary. If I, if I may, for a second, um, Tase McDonald and I, we're on director, uh, yeah, he found a better scanner, but. Students paying a better, we also had an issue with their dispatch, obviously it's not referred towards for many. Um, and as Danny said, one step forward, some of that, um, again, I'm hit by some employees that are out on extended medical, so that's the fact that your numbers. We're still obviously hiring, still interviewing and whatnot. Um, I just wanted to buy the break update, because I've kind of turned on a meeting here, I knew. Um, part of the Lumen project that we did, the network upgrade to give our county redundancy and diverse paths with our network, so. There's not a single point of failure, has hit a big snag. Uh, what I've discovered is no one in Trumbull County. Even, uh, I spoke with Jennifer Hanford at IT and Scott at IT, um, nobody has the. Productual Cisco switches and routers, um, from back, however many years ago, those things were installed. Um, as you guys know, with computer technology, those things need to be replaced every, you know, five, six years, servers every five, six years, computers every couple of years. Uh, switches and browsers are along the same kind of path, line five to eight years, and they start to get ended life and, and get really, um. Start causing issues. What we found is that no one has credentials to get into those to see what the configurations, the IP schemes are. And that's what connects us to all the agencies in county, all four of your agencies. So essentially, we're the hub. And you have spokes that go out to job, uh, Niles, Gerard, Wardstown, and connect back to us and Lauren as a backup. And you have spokes that go out to John, Niles, Gerard, Wardstown, and connect back to us and Warren as a backup just for equipment. What would discover if those go into a hard reboot and they ever failed, they could lock down and we could be stuck. And we would be down hard. When I say down hard, I mean like pen and paper back to dispatching, which nobody in this county wants. I obviously don't want. I dealt with a similar project in my previous county. So what I've done, I've consulted a couple of other, I've consulted Warren's IT guy, I spoke to him. And what I'm doing is I'm meeting with the IT specialists that I've dealt with previously that does specifically nine one one work. We're going to stand up a brand new network with new routers and switches and basically duplicate what we have because we don't know what we have because we can't get in and access those things. We're going to set up a new network, make test it, make sure it works, and then we'll basically cut the old one off because it's outdated anyway. And that will give us new equipment, which will hopefully avoid us going into a catastrophic failure. Obviously, it's good news in the sense of it needs to be done. It's going to get taken care of. It's bad news because it's going to be kind of a pain as far as projects, probably going to cost me about twenty thousand dollars in equipment, which. Because you guys didn't cut my budget and allowed me to save the servers that we need to do and the reporters that we need to do because of state arcs program. Be able to absorb that cost and take care of it. And what we'll be able to do is if we are fortunate enough to go to a new dispatch center, when we do, we'll be able to pick that equipment up, take it with us. And it will be, and save us time for the new building because the new network will be done. We'll just need to install it and part of that. So just wanted to give you a heads up. That's kind of one of the things that we all want. So we hear me talk about equipment. It's not because I want to talk about equipment. We're actually in a pretty critical state over there. I mean, you guys know the need for the for a new building and technology and equipment and everything there. But that's just one of the things we've discovered recently that's pretty problematic and keeps me up at night. We're entering a time of year with storms that have come. You know, you have generators that's old because we haven't replaced it. We did new ones that integrate. You know, those are things where if you go into a a big outage or a weather event and you have a hard reboot on your computers. You know, when you go home and your computer's got the blue screen to death and it says went into recovery mode. If we go into that with the servers and with the switches and routers, there's potential we could not get back into those devices because nobody has the credentials. From when it was set up many, many years ago. I've talked with Roger, you know, previous operations director. He didn't have access to those either. I've dug through all old computer files that we can find with credentials and we pretty much tried everything. Additionally, the IT guy bringing in, he could try to get in them, but it's one of those things that, you know, you poke the bear and it could eat your hand. You know what I mean? So just give you an update. That's kind of what we're dealing with right now, as you already know, staffing issues.
Thank you, Tase. Good work, too.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to get out of here.
Okay, Joe.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Item ten is to authorize advertisement. I realized that at April ninth, the law is going to change and I checked with State of Ohio on this and they will allow us in the future to notice. This will probably be our last one in the newspaper. We did not want to wait until April ninth because we have until the end of August to build this. We need to get it out to bid. But moving forward, we won't need, we'll still come to you for authorization to advertise, however, it won't be done in September. I think it's three oh seven. I I'm probably quoting it wrong, but there's a new law going into effect. Regarding public advertising. And then I don't know that we have any more on here, but I did want to mention to everybody that. I sent out mass emails. If you didn't get it, call me. The Trumbull or the Congressman Joyce's office is accepting appropriations requests through March twentieth. I we had a meeting yesterday about our building, so we're going to ask for money for our building. We're also going to ask for money for Crane Drive. Through our office, but we did reach out to Arian Bayroll Smith and she's sent another set of links. Because it is a cumbersome website to figure out what subcommittee you're applying through. And if anybody's interested, if you're pursuing their funds, I can forward you that email that she sent me as well. They don't have any reconstructions out yet, which is, you know, kind of disappointing, but I also understand it's. You know, very complicated process. So we appreciate the congressman's office assistance on that. We will be applying for, I I forget what the budget was. I sent I sent a draft budget for our planning commission building. I don't know if it'll be funded or not. But basically to cover everything from agency. Well. That I I sent it to nine one one. That would be on Tase C two. And we obviously, we never say we would help people for sure. But my first thought is my my building, our building, and the sanitary sewers that we've been working on for twenty five years. So, but it can hurt to ask. Might as well ask for it, right? See what happens.
You've got funds for next year or this year?
It's a congressionally directed spending, so you can take, I can send you the links. You could see what they funded last year. Last year, I believe Portland received funding for a facility. I don't know exactly what it was, but these are offered, you know, through the congressman's office on, I think, annual basis. And then scheduling to start at the end of the summer in September, I believe, is usually around the time the state capital budget opens up. So the state capital budget process is starting now, and so it's a good idea to think ahead on. What do you want to submit for that process? And those usually open up July, August. And I think theirs is a more simplified version of the congressional appropriation. But I I've sent the link, I probably to everybody in this room, right? She sent it to, yeah, I forwarded it to everyone and that's what we're going to try to get accomplished and. And I think that's for my goal with Trumbull tourism, just to answer your question, Commissioner. This is for FY oh six and the federal budget doesn't start until. First, twenty six, sorry, twenty years ago. But that's so that wouldn't even take effect until like like this year, early this year. Yeah, and that's how most grants are. You apply for them this year, you get the money in a year, usually. That's usually how it works. They're they rarely move more quickly than that. The other thing I would.
Would they tell us that it's warranted this year?
It's a good question. I don't know. We, they're under continuing resolution right now, federal government is. And so we'll submit it on March the twentieth. I'll probably have something for the journal next Wednesday. If other entities, you know, want to apply and have questions, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but I can certainly. Try to help as much as we can. I put in for the entire building. Elevator, masonry repairs. Front entrance was thought ADX. I mean, literally everything. We haven't done it yet. We're still working through the budget. I had a meeting yesterday with Jason. Recorder.
Sure, can that include security?
That's part of it. I've got the whole list. Everything that we discussed over the last couple of years, I've got it all. I think comprehensive list of things that need to be done to that building. I've looked through some previously funded projects and it appears that they do fund government building, especially under the heading of USDA. I don't know if they're going to consider us a rule. So you're not, but that'll be up to the the ranking committee to decide what we what they'll consider for Trumbull County. If that if that's something that the commissioners even want to focus on, truly, it's it's. Up to the board to decide. I think Crane Drive is a very important project as well. Gary can speak to that. There's a lot of very important projects that need to be funded. Well, unfortunately, we just received notice of this less than a week ago. And so and it's due next Thursday. I wish we had a little bit more time to prepare and admit something. But in the past, I can remember, Gary, you might remember this. Twenty twenty four years ago. We, I think we submitted with the planning commission at least fifteen appropriation requests and got one. So I'm hopeful that we are funded. We'll see. And the other thing I wanted to mention, Commissioner Malloy had requested that I reach out to the the, I don't know the name of the. Tree place. Do you remember the tree planting thing? So anyhow, I can't remember the name of the organization that is doing this statewide. But they're going to each county and asking you to plant a commemorative white oak tree for the two hundred fifty year anniversary. So she had just, the person in charge of that had just sent an email to you and I stating that. The the date is April the twenty third, which is the meeting day. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. I have no other details on the matter. She said she'd follow up and let us know. I don't know what we have to do. If we just show up, if they plant it, if we need to plant it. I mean, I'm willing to plant a tree. It's not that. But I just I just wanted to give you a heads up on that date. It's April the twenty third.
Not sure of the location yet either.
Well, I did reach out to, I think it should, since I was asked to be headed up, I made this unilateral decision. You can disagree with me, but it should be in downtown Warren. It's the historic capital of the western reserve. And it should be in the historic district, in my.
Well, there's some big trees that got down that really pissed the public off a few years ago, like the tree place.
In in any case, I believe they they considered Courthouse Square as the original, you know, prime. But really, there's not enough room there. And so the mayor and Eddie have stated that they're good with it. In the vicinity of where you're located, in the Kinsman House, Women's Park, or even City Hall area. Which I think is a good place to put it. And hopefully we can keep it alive until next year.
North Park Commons, where the former Wee Nationalory Building was, where we have a farmer's market. And we asked for our trees that we planted there. We could, we could do the, that tree was young, growing.
So you're already here, you're already taking care of the other trees that you planted?
We have other trees there.
Julie, it looks like you're going. Scout a spot out.
What's that?
It looks like you're going to scout a spot out for the tree.
I like his idea. I forgot about the Ween building being. Especially if you, if they're already doing the staff to maintain other trees, that's. But again, that's. I, well, it's going to be.
It'll be white oak, so.
Eventually. I don't know. I'm not. I don't know anything about it, but we know how to get stuff done. That's about it. But anyhow, I just want to bring that to your attention. I have to head to the doctor, so.
Okay, Gary, I think this is the next three.
For sure. Well.
Yeah, I love running over.
Commissioners, bottom line, I'm a senior engineer. Number eleven is to create fund four fifty two. For our still wet water line project. It's going to transfer some money from our project reserve account to get started. And then number twelve, very similar, we're creating fund four fifty one. Maybe with part seven two, sanitary seal project. And that'll be mission concrete by, mission planned by five thousand dollars.
Engage money in those both of those accounts.
Gary.
All right, Gary, new process, engineer, commissioners, I'm Dr. P and Lisa, did you? But this is basically our completed E C for all of their services.
Yeah, we received our invoice.
Yeah, we received ours. Sanitary for our seventeen one ninety eight. This is just an annual resolution to put on and. Then there engineers, highway engineers. Commissioner, we all.
Gary, before we know it, there still is a hearing for us, Warren.
Yeah, well. We do have a public hearing.
Seven five five.
Yes. A big irrelevant.
Do you have something else, Gary?
Well, item fourteen is mine.
Oh, no, okay. Fourteen, to authorize an amendment to agenda item passed on December seventh. Twenty twenty two. American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty one Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Trumbull County, Ohio. For the agreement with Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership in the amount of one million dollars. For the purpose of funding emergency home repair project, and it runs through October thirty one twenty five. Now, Commissioner Malloy, do you know?
Behind us, we have neighborhood partnership.
I can speak to that. Matt Martin, Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership, Commissioners, this is a fairly straightforward one, a budget neutral proposition. We just are requesting an extension to our agreement to form emergency home repairs. For the million dollar our allocation that we received in late twenty twenty two. We're requesting an extension through October thirty first of this year. We have spent down about seven hundred seventy eight thousand dollars of the. One million dollars that we have. Possible detailed reports on what we've done so far, so that balance, we have. A hundred and fifty five Trumbull County residents on waiting list. Obviously, we'll get to all of them through this, but just to make the point. Here, Lisa, you will for this money, probably will before that day, but nonetheless, asking for an extension, spend rest of money down.
Great. Any questions, Commissioner?
Yes, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. For the annual nominations, the Iowa Water Supply Revolver. Every year. All of the entities in the states and if they nominate their projects. And. Projects. New water project, the Still Lake of Red Water Project. Uh, nominated, I'll throw out the nominations and commissioner, I know. And they are due by Fridays the seventeenth. Right now, no, I got that, I got that Friday the twenty first.
And Gary, these these here, these are all monies from.
Uh, the Ohio EPA WSR. Well. We got, we got zero percent funding, but hopefully we can get fifty percent forgiveness. I have a map there. The blueprint is to, you see how our line lines up here? Interest surveys in the area, you see all the little clocks in there. They want to be a project too. Same thing here. Then you can see all the, all the houses. These are two good loops. Hopefully, we'll get the fifty percent forgiveness, just like we did on this line down the outstate road. Right here, makes this line right here connected. They get the principal fifty percent forgiveness and their capital charges on their monthly water bill pay back that debt. Now, on that home road booster station project, right now. We already, we've already explained probably water. Here, but now we are building this line to get that water from our champions into this district. But we still have, we're still anticipating. This will help us a lot with the cost. Will help us with the water quality. But to make the water quality even better. We weren't to build another pump station over here by the. I mean, by the water here to plant and push this water through. To get out to West Farmington. The water models are telling us it is going to solve a couple of water problems. You know, us luck declines, it's an A K violation, definitely. So that second project, this pump station here pushes water here. Because right now, the water that we are getting into the champions of this district. A lot of it is coming through these two meters where that water is coming out of the treatment back to us. A lot of it is coming through these two meters where that water is coming out of the treatment back to the water grid. Then coming out here, then ten thousand. We want that water going straight from the plant. Then probably went to Farmington, close those valves, feed it all with this, cut the plant. I don't have more water here, set that water out, certainly don't need to do work and stuff.
What's that gonna cost?
Uh, we're looking at it right now, my nomination is, probably looking at about two dollars. At least somebody gets the nomination and I don't know how we can pay for it yet, but at least let's get the nomination in there this week.
That's providing service to a lot of people, like goes that loop up there in Suddington. Champion, it's gonna drive off the champion of Suddington. And allow us to build on that for the future, get up in Bristol.
Yeah, and we are in this, sir.
Yeah, that's kind of like your time.
Yeah, and we already spent, uh, A R P money for the engineering for these loops here. Matter of fact, you can even put this online on your road up to the market. This one, I don't have a many thousands of water lines. Gonna submit it on like, uh, fifty. Yeah.
Need to worry about closing a little more mosquito lake, seven north and fourth two.
Yeah.
Before we go up in Farmington and.
All, okay, what you're talking about. Trying to do something with this.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we were due for a new interest survey last night. We did the blue to. Then interest survey out here and ask all the people. Are you interested in water? Would you be willing to pay, uh, a monthly capital charge for it? You know, and we did not get a good response.
Coming to homes here too.
Yeah, you can see all the little dogs. I don't know if your eyes are good, no, there are quite a few, don't prove it. But we did not get a good response. People saying, yes, we're ready to water, I wanna, you know, they want us to. We didn't get that response.
How are their wells?
Yeah, they're all on wells.
A lot of oil is, uh, mosquito lake is right there, so.
So now we're, can we go back to them and ask them to respond straight?
I think, I think it's time we do a new winter survey out here in the northern area.
Then how are we gonna run this from here up to here?
I had another water survey here. We did not get a good response, I mean.
Oh, but there's, there's stuff tuned out.
Color code and map, you know, that's it, you know, we run a mile of water lines. Uh, here, we might get five hours.
Yeah, but there's, that's what them, foot and bill, working with Congress, Joyce's office, Senator's offices. We're, if we're gonna expand those areas, we're gonna need federal funds. But we need to ask.
They approached me.
Close that, there's a lot of, that's our growth area in the county. If we're looking at housing, we're looking at growth, champion Bristol, Mecca, Johnson Fowler, that's our growth area. And that's what we have to consider. We'll never have any number growth there until we lay down the ground. So we have to keep that as a goal. That's where the people that are working in these jobs, we have, I never want to live.
All right, well, we, we can, if I can get time, we can start another water survey out here in this whole entire area. Do you know we had good interest here on the state road and we had good interest here, here.
And now get them away from falls into.
Oh, yeah, this, this, this water line we're putting on the state road right now is being built. That, that's, we can close that expensive off now.
And that saves us money.
That's gonna save us a heck of a lot. Close that, uh, get on the water, water here, but they're, they're ready to. So we have a problem with cost and quality here. This will, they necessarily approve the cost, this will, uh, pump things down there and try to back all the words in the.
Gary, why can't we, let me ask you this, with all that area up here in the, in the county?
Yes.
Mega Johnson, Vernon Fowler, Hartford, Champion, Bristol. Why are we, why are we taking water on mosquito lake, putting it down in Warren and then buying it back from Warren? Why can't we have our own water source for buy, for those colleges up there, for the, that the county owns?
Well, they have their.
Understand that. I understand. Could we get federal funds to build our own figure plan and not have to buy from them? Why are we, why are we going from the county, going through a city, to buy back to, it's good to save costs ultimately, we own the water?
Yeah.
Then we're cost, we're not at a market, we're cost.
The, the, the stocks that first I would have the plan saved, so. If I didn't have that same as other governments on my offering.
All right, that's, that seems to be a long term for our future.
So you're saying to build, build our own plan?
If we were to build our own plan out here, I'd have to go, I know we're looking at this for a waste water treatment plant, um, out there in the, in the champion. And with bill, we're paying the important except flow out of. Except our sewage flow out of champion. You would have it on the, to pay the debt on the target, in town here for us too. Uh, looking at a water and the things. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
Let's go to Dave Joyce, same way, plant and Mecca, and that'll provide for the whole of the tier.
Fire or some engineering and study, something of that nature.
I, I saw like buying from now is buying from, sorry, my nerves, warm water days, see, he's watering, and if, you know, let's buy the cow, quit buying the mo from.
I, I agree. If there is a way to, well, yes, that'd be.
I'm sure.
But when I wanted to build the treatment plant here, it's, you know, it's fair to it.
It's like Jesus.
The EPA told me, Gary, when it comes in here, it likes to get more dollars. So it's up to them to say, yes. Well, that's what they told me about the sewer, because I wanted to build a sewer treatment plant here, and EPA told me. I'm even gonna consider it for the future of the planet. Because there's a regional buyer of sewage in the city.
Okay, that's fine, but we, but now, this is only world.
And so I can't build a treatment plant here, we're gonna say, well, I don't believe it at all.
And there, this is only world we're living in now, Gary, so you're talking about, in the past, we're talking about now with a Republican governor, Republican president, Republican congressman. Republican senators, Republican board commissioners, if, if we're ever gonna get something north and get the okay from the government, state and federal, now's the time for us. I don't have ways of doing ours. Like I said, if a day were to come and we sold ourselves water, and we provided water, Mecca would provide water, besides we provide water, Valerie. I mean, my job's completely over tired.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can even do a, of the champion.
Well, we would build. Yeah.
And here we go again, we're gonna grow in the county, where are we growing to? We gonna put another dollar store up here, or what are we gonna do? Let's, let's do a.
Well, getting water out, getting water out there is one thing, getting sewer out there is the other. There, though, they have water, I, I don't know how much they could develop without the sewer. On the sewer, the whole different.
One break at a time. Warren was in that situation once too.
If, if we put that sewer plant here, that will take care of any of this with it.
No, it would just take our existing load.
So where would you need a sewer plant?
Where we are paying a huge bill for it right now, except that we, we wanna get off that bill and get more, more wastewater treatment like capacity and. That's, that's the whole idea. Uh, Warren's, well, wastewater treatment plant's not in this area here. Uh, isn't that close to stamp area? It's, it's, it's right here, but they don't have capacity for water sound to expand, to bring in these big customers. So I propose to them, well, hell, I'll look, I'll, I'll take a million dollars to pay those capacity, give you a million dollars, they have capacity, let me go to plant right here, except this. And everything, and, 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 uh, Howler. Their, uh, chief of water pollution at Warren, he was all behind it. Yeah, Gary, give me more capacity, build your own plant, I give him the blessing. But when it got up to, uh, service director and the mayor, they started looking at dollars and cents, how much money you can man now, and it died.
Look at our dollars and cents, and look at their dollars and cents, we got this whole part of the county.
We can get that, man.
This year, fast, the county's been neglected for a hundred years. It's time we started thinking about it.
Well, I wonder how we're gonna get, if I build a plant on one side or the other, I'm gonna get a, a lot of, a lot of.
Put a man on the moon, Gary.
Well, if nothing else, if we put.
Yeah, well, we would want to knock both across, everybody, we wanted up in here.
There you go. I could trust these to be drooling to have an opportunity to have something like that up there. Working projects. Okay, your homework assignment, Gary, just make that happen.
All right, well, I'm still working on trying to figure out how much it costs to get super on this, I didn't, don't get that. I did find a study on that, from your back, so, you know, I haven't.
And even our fairgrounds, we can't really develop, do anything more with our fairgrounds until we get that, that's right at the edge, we can do something about that now. But again, Congressman, Senator, it takes to that.
Thank you, Gary.
All right.
Um, Mike?
Yeah. First, that's number eighteen, it's authorized. I had to hand us, uh, the sign, letters to hold on. First, we certify the county transit is certified. So this letter was originally done back in October twenty twenty two. That's when we first certified, we're qualified. The reason for this is, is two, two things. Number one, uh, we have certified that we're, we're main transit system in this area. We're also a nonprofit, which, yeah. So basically the letter states that we have other transits in here, like, for example, the city of Gerodas transit system, uh, city of Harbor. It involves, they all do the whole thing, but they're all basically for their area. And like maybe Monday or Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever. The procedures only. Then you have, uh, Antoine Sisters, they do some Easter seals, they do some. Like that, Comacani Transit is the only one that does it, seniors can disable Monday through Saturday, basically six, eight to sixty. So that's a little assignment, uh, to give up to all that. And so what this does is this helps us for our fifty three ten point. Uh, verified. So I, I didn't, I guess, probably every three years, we have to recertify. That seems to be the number, uh, yeah, it's every three years. That's events. Um, other, other part is to approve the chemical certification for, uh. The companies that we went up for fish, uh, remember I said, there were companies that have vehicles that are ten years old, they can use them as long as they get certified by. Mechanics and other commissioners approve. So, uh, there's a five companies, Sunset Transportation will not run any vehicles that are ten years old or older down here. Um, Copper Caravan, they have three vehicles, I have their certifications of. Uh, Garwin, that's four vehicles. Uh, I only have one of their certifications, so the question is, and there's gonna be two or three tomorrow and maybe one next week. You want me to leave Garwin out here, or you want me to come back and amend this? That's my question to them. And USA Tax, we have sixteen vehicles, that's our title plate.
Who, who are they certified by? I mean, are they just gonna body to say, it's not running good?
Sure, I, I license all, I am actual mechanics certification for each one.
So you're saying Garwin, uh, that, that they certify these other than Garwin? Is that what I'm hearing?
Hasn't done them all yet. Garwin has only done one at this point. They've got, they're supposed to do, I think, two tomorrow, Thursday. And then another one maybe final week, so I could, we could put, take our office.
Probably, because we don't know if, you know, they're.
And that's fine. That's what we were talking about.
For the others, we can prove me.
I definitely, and the reason is, especially with, um, USA, all their vehicles, sixteen of them, they're all. Ten years old during the contract period. Are they certified though? Yeah, I've got the. Right there, right here, and Garwins aren't certified?
Right.
No, they're doing them right now.
But they're not gonna be done until after our meeting to.
Right.
Vote on it.
What does that mean? Can they still use them?
Well, I mean. They're not supposed to.
Well, are they aware of that?
Yeah.
What they're not solution, they shouldn't.
But like I said, with USA, they've been using them because that's all they have. That's why, but theirs have been certified. Yeah, I got the certification here, yes. And, uh, we do, every new contract we always do them, so.
So they're certified once a year?
Uh, no, for this, this is the one time.
After their ten years, when they're ten years old.
Well, well, this is the one time, it's for the entire contract.
Yeah, with the contract, three year contract.
Three year.
This is three year contract, right?
It's sort of the contract with the way.
We should have them certified every year, is it eleven, twelve year, they could turn the junk?
I, I agree.
I don't want senior out there getting stuck on the side of the road, that's an important meeting.
Send an email that, I need these, that we want certificates every year. We can do that. We've never done that in the past, so I mean, we can.
Bill Danson prosecutors, the only thing I would say is that I, I would hope they would voluntarily do that for us.
Right.
I'm not sure exactly what the term of that contract was for how often that was gonna be required under the contract, but perhaps, you know, just as a, a good steward of everything that they would.
Yeah, well, we can pick and choose for this. When we did the contracts, we didn't guarantee them any work.
That's also.
So we can say, unless you're being certified, we're not referring you.
I, I guess I would caution you on that, though, is that if that's not a term that was specifically in the contract, you could get some heat for trying to enforce that as a reason why you're not giving rides. Uh, like I said, my hope would be with Mike's experience with these vendors, perhaps they would just voluntarily try to do this as a sign of goodwill.
Who pays for that fee for certification?
Yeah.
Now, let's, uh, that, as we get, uh, I send out every, not I send, every month they turn into me, all an operating data sheet. On there, they tell me how many vehicles have been serviced. So I keep track of how many of their vehicles got serviced, so. They always send them to me, like, two, two vehicles this month, three vehicles next month. So I know they're getting serviced. Pretty well changes. It's being certified, this.
Well, it's definitely something we need to look at, with a new contract, you know?
Yeah, but it's, like I said, I do know they all, they get serviced because that's power load. When they have to send, you know, I verify it.
And I would hope that they would only put vehicles on the road there, safe.
Yeah, because if they break down, then they're gonna have to pay for the breakdown, right? So.
So I mean, we'll take off Garwin out, once I get, oh, Garwin's a lot of bad.
Now, do they look at tires and all that with this?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, it's a completely. I mean, like, for example, here's one.
They, they do certify those with.
They certify mechanics. Each one.
License.
Like this one here, uh.
Who picks it, you or them?
No, no, it's their mechanics. I mean, they, none, none of these companies have their own mechanics. They all go out to certify the can to get, like, the year requires, whatever might be, to get their, uh.
So there's an official certification standard?
Right. Yeah, so for example, here's.
And it's signed by that mechanic.
Yeah, um, I do need this back, please, but like, I could just show this time. This is like, that's from USA Tax. Yeah.
Just so their license, like Commissioner Malloy said, you know, backyard guys, stamp, sticker.
I have another Tommy Boy reference in this one.
It's the same service.
Yeah, I did.
Each one, I said, each one uses their own mechanic, you know, tell them the.
And we haven't really had any issues in the past.
I'm happy. Now, it's with you, I don't, nevertheless, right? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll take Garwin off. Commissioners, were you proposing that we?
Were you proposing that we? Have a yearly inspection? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't know if we could do that. But.
Well, we've already made the contract.
Yeah, Bill Danson Prosecutors, I I would say, I would, we can look at that, but I would also say that perhaps you could just reach out to them and. Ask them as a courtesy if they would do that, just to give people the confidence in the vehicles that are going to be used in the contract. And hopefully they'll work with you.
I think we stipulate any policy we want. When it comes to policy and procedure, it comes to. How often we refer them. That's up to us. Just because we gave a contract, doesn't mean we're guaranteeing them that they own us now or they control us. If we wanted to, if we tell them, you got to provide the service to these standards, they'll go by it. I don't see, why would they have a problem? They're all reputable companies.
Uh, again, Mike Salmich, I'm trying to transit a lot of the. Famous art repeating for either one or two years. Honestly, that was it. Right, so that's why.
Oh, we did do three years now, so I think this needs to come in.
Three years.
And I think they would understand that.
Yeah, I think last one, I think of the last contract was two plus. So, yeah, the other concern is the vehicles are old. Yeah.
Right.
Ten years or older. That's what.
So expect me to include that on as an agenda. Well, that's something too, that that they're leaving, saying what vehicle it was.
That should say.
What's it saying, the one you just passed around?
It has the B I N numbers.
Okay. And you have a roster of all their vehicles, and so you can see that if they have ten vehicles, here's the ten reports. And it wasn't just one report changed ten times.
Again, so. Up that stuff. Yeah, I do, I just. Yeah. But, yeah, but I mean, like, for example, this is, yeah. See. I just, I'm sorry. They have all the B I N numbers. That's. That's what we receive in our.
If they take one out of commission, they add one, they notify you right away.
Um, no, they don't notify me. I mean, if they sell their vehicles. They're supposed to, I should let them, they should let me know when they sell them. Like, for example, I know, let's go back to Sunset for a second. They just bought a brand new vehicle, and that's what they're using down here. I've heard. Time to hit forty miles, honey. So that's what they're using, the brand new vehicles, I'm not on twenty twenty four. Twenty five.
This, this is saying whether it's been inspected.
No, no, that's just their vehicle.
Right, yeah, it doesn't say when it's been. This vehicle with its VIN number has been inspected. That's not wrong.
Well, you have separate inspections for everyone, right?
Yeah.
And they have the VIN number on it? So the VIN number should.
Right, the VIN number would match whatever. Yeah, and what I did, when I sent this out to the vendors, I went through the list, and said, you got three vehicles. It's, uh. For example, it's a twenty ten, I don't know, just one, twenty twenty two, God, a Chrysler Voyager.
Do you ever spot check the vehicles or do inspections?
I go out there yearly.
And look at it, massive van, here's one's been inspected.
Well, yeah, it's a complete inspection. I have to check. The vehicles, if they have wheelchairs, I got to check, see if the wheelchairs are working. I checked to see if the ploneliness, I see, is there a fire extinguisher in there? Is there a first aid kit in there? There's a whole list that I go through. Checking. And I do this once a year.
Do they know when you're coming or do you show up?
Oh.
Oh, I would tell them.
I mean, I've done where I've distracted them, and I've done where I, well, the reason you got to pass, pass them, because you got to make sure there's a vehicle. It's there, that there's a vehicle there. That's the reason. But I have dropped this. Here, other place just drunk this. That's part, that's part of my job.
Okay. I'm starting up for that. Um. We have. Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Uh, so hey. Appreciate, uh, the time and ability to be here. Um, the only thing I had, I'm very, very agree. I've just, uh. Want to set the record straight on a couple of things. I was here at a workshop, uh, two workshops ago. There were some allegations made. Uh, by HR and by the commissioners, right, regarding the, uh. Uh, for Labor Market Standard Act and the, uh, uh. With us being. Um. Uh, against, you know, not adhering to the federal law. And also us being out of compliance with the county wage and salary schedule. Um, both those allegations, I, was concerning to me. So I immediately asked for a, a legal, legal opinion on both. You know, are we in fakes? Are we in fact, in violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act? It's federal law. Um, are we out of compliance with the Trump County Wage and Salary Schedule? Um, clearly.
I don't think it is ours, it was work.
We were neither. We were neither. Uh, so I got, I got, uh, clear, uh. Explanation that the Fair Labor Standards Act, we are absolutely not in violation of that. Um, you know, it was stated. Um. Uh, you should not be paying out overtime. Uh, it's federal law. You're not allowed to do that. We're going to agree to disagree. It doesn't accuse you from being out of compliance, when in fact, we were never out of, we were never at, against the law. For the fair, and Alexander, you need to help me here.
That was not my email.
This is, this. What do you mean?
Was that my email?
What you're talking about? No.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that, who, who sent that email?
These were your quotes from the meeting.
Excuse me.
Ones that I just said, those were your words out of the meeting that I went back and reviewed and wrote down. Those were your allegations.
Okay.
Um, so to satisfy, this is Wage Hour Law one oh one, okay, the Fair Labor Standards Act. It's very, very clear. Uh, there's exempt employees, there's non-exempt employees. You have to satisfy two factors. You know, one, you have to meet the salary threshold. Two, you have to, uh, to be exempt from overtime. Uh, you have to either meet the administrative, professional, or executive. Or actually outside sales categories, which you talked about. Um, you know, our director and deputy director are exempt employees. They fit into that category. They meet both factors. When it says they're not entitled to overtime, that's correct, but that doesn't mean that they're not, that they, that they can't have it. And so it with further, uh, you know, within with the, uh, well, Higher Revised Code, not the Higher Revised Code, but the, uh. The section of the, uh. A code of federal regulations, it talks about how the, how it's defined exempt employees. Uh, from. They can meet certain job duties and meet the pay threshold. Um, an employer may provide an exempt employee with additional compensation. Without losing the exemption or violating a salary basis. That's exactly what's the case. So I just want to go on the record, just to state, I mean, this was damaging, you know, when they got a board of elections and, you know. We are absolutely not in violation of the Fair Labor Standard Act. Just want to go on the record by stating that. And, and, and I want you to look at this. I want you to review this. And if there were some misstatements made initially, you know, I, I think the record should be set straight. That's all. Now, number two, uh, is the, are we in violation or out of compliance with the. Uh, county wage and salary schedule? We don't, we, we are an autonomous board. Uh, we do not, we, we do not, we're not mandated by law to, to adhere, to, to adhere to that. Um. Uh, as an independent appointing authority, that's us. Trumbull County Board of Elections. It is generally within the discretion of the Board of Elections to have its own policies. On matters not specifically required by statute or determined by the Board of Commissioners. So. The, the, the allegation of you're out of, you're not in compliance, or now you're trying to get in compliance. We were in compliance before. Now that we restructured their salary schedule, we're still in compliance with both the federal law and. The county wage and salary schedule just doesn't apply. And it need, that needs to be known and important. Uh, I, I, and maybe it's just different and unique to the Trump, to the Board of Elections, because it is an autonomous board, and I know most of your, most of your other departments don't fall into that category. But just for the record, I wanted to make sure that. Everybody. Knows and it is reported accurately that we're not in violation of this. Of either. So I wanted, I want to talk about that. And then the only thing I want to talk about is, uh. And I know you've, listen, I applaud your efforts, and I know you guys are digging into this big time with the, with the, with the, uh. With the, 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 uh. The budgets, but and I, and I have this, but and this is your, this is your spreadsheet. Okay, basically, this is your spreadsheet with all the departments. And right here, the Board of Elections, you know, we requested. We, as I said in the last workshop, we are, we have laser precision when it comes to budgeting for these things. We come within one percent. We don't, it's, it's a laser, it's a razor thin budget. We cut what we can cut. I've got examples of how we do that. But, you know, we asked for, uh, you know, two million dollars. You kept bringing up, oh, Portage County does it for one point five. Why can't you do it for one point five? And then you give us one point two. I don't know what the logic that was applied there is. There's a, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a big difference between Portage County. And, 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 and Trumbull County. Uh, they do have twenty five thousand less voters. They did run their elections by five hundred thousand dollars less. But you know what? We have. More school districts, more townships, more villages, more cities, more wards, more central committee people, more, uh, more registered voters. Their, their director and deputy director. Make more than ours. Guess what else is included in there? Overtime, additional compensation because they're exempt employees. All the things that we were accused of doing wrong. You look at La Mahoney County. Now, Mahoney County has twenty five thousand more voters than we do. Do you know what? They didn't do it for five, they didn't, they didn't require just five hundred thousand dollars more to run their elections. One point two million dollars more. So you can't, my, my message is this. Don't cherry pick examples to support your narrative. Just please don't. Look at, look at the big picture, take a step across the board, look at a cross section of, of like sized counties and really get a fair comparison. Uh, because it does put us in a bad light when I think reckless comments are made that aren't accurate, not true. The other thing with, with our budget, whatever you have to do, I mean, this is not enough. This is enough to pay the, I think, the salary related wages type things for our county, but it's not enough to run the, the, the elections. Which are required by law to do and to fund. But as a show of good faith, listen, we've reviewed every budget line item with a fine tooth comb. We've cut what we can cut. We talked about how every, all of our overtime is either mandated directly or indirectly. Um, we've got grants that we've got grants that we've secured for capital improvements. Windows, uh, P E O, uh, uh, polling election official training, uh, uh, consolidate, we've consolidated polling locations. We have fewer polling locations, fewer poll workers, fewer machines, so we can save money. We've capped, as you asked, we capped the sick and vacation conversion.
Tell what?
Uh, almost to, it's. We brought it down, not to where you asked, but we brought it down considerably. We sent that out, we had a board action, uh. Had a board action, uh, last.
Figure was?
I think it's, uh. Wasn't eight, it wasn't the lowest you asked, eighty.
Eighty forty, so.
Eighty forty, I think it was, uh. Don't misspeak, Danny, but I think it might be, uh. Sixty one hundred or eighty one hundred. It came down considerably. You know, the, 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 the judges are an outlier. They, they signed a. They wrote themselves a, uh, a, a court order saying that, hey, we're going to be way up here. You can't do anything about it. Everybody else is, is pretty much at what you had said, uh, except for the other ones that come from a different budget. So we, we did, we wanted to do this as a show of good, this was kind of two things. We did to show you, sign a good face. We want to work with you. We need you, you need us to run good elections. But also, it's, it's also a point that I wanted to use to emphasize. We do not have to adhere to these, we don't fall under all of your, your, your reg, your regulations, your guidelines and things like that. Even though we have to abide by these labor standards and all this stuff. Um, but, but we, I think we did a fair thing. For, for you to help with your budgeting and things like that and to get it down. Um, by the way, it was, it was misstated at another, uh, workshop. That it was alleged that the Board of Ed, of Ed, Board of Elections, Board members get healthcare. And then no other place gets, they don't, no other boards of elections get healthcare. Well, boards of elections do get healthcare. There are several across the state that do get healthcare, but guess what? Trumbull County is not one of them. I don't get any healthcare. Nobody, nobody on our board gets healthcare. We haven't asked for healthcare. So again, be careful with the statements that you're putting out there, please.
Part, if I may, just real quick.
One last part. We have one on film.
Quick, I just want to get your name on that.
Go ahead.
We didn't say you got healthcare. We said that there are other. Uh, counties where the boards don't, and the prosecutor made it apparent that you did. So I just want.
Okay, yeah, we don't, we don't. Uh, I, I guess, I guess what I had heard was that, that, that the insinuation was that.
I understand.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're boards of elections get healthcare company. But not here in Trumbull County. We can, we could, but we haven't asked for it.
Right.
Uh, and we also had just another sign of good faith. We have, we're one, we're one staff position down. We know we're on the verge of a fiscal, fiscal, I don't want to say crisis, but we're, we got, we got some financial things we got to deal with. So we put that on hold. We're doing everything we can, and it's a slap in the face when I come to you and ask for two million dollars, and I know. Costs to run our, our election. You are defunding. The ability for this county to run fair, free, open elections, which is a pillar of democracy. Do not cut that. Do not cut those. It's, it's, it's essential. So that's, I'm on my soapbox on that. But it was a slap, slap in the face when you know historically what we ask for. We need. We use, and it's not, it's not frivolous. Uh, the things that will, we're going to send you a letter, a, a letter of, uh. Memorandum. It's going to basically stay. It's kind of on notice. You know, here's what's going to happen if we don't get any additional money. Uh, we're going to, uh, not be able to hire and train sufficient staff. Uh, efficient number of polling election, uh, officials. We're not going to be able to afford postage for mandated mailings, absentee, absentee mailings. Campaign finance mailings. We're not going to be able to purchase the, uh, the, the sufficient number of ballots for two county wide elections. We're not going to be able to maintain a, a secure early voting location. We're not going to be able to, uh, provide mandated maintenance and upgrades for cybersecurity. We're not going to be able to meet the contractual maintenance obligations that we have for scanners and other voting equipment. We're not going to be able to, uh, meet the contractual maintenance on office equipment, the monthly maintenance fees on voter registration software. I go on and on and on, but it's not good stuff. Do not, please. Asking you, do not hang your hat on. The position of defunding. The operations of elections in Trumbull County when we were less than two percent of the general fund. This is not where you're going to make up the deficit. I'm asking you not to. What I think. Is single us out. Forty two percent. You know what everybody else is? God, the highest one is twenty nine. Every five, ten, fifteen, four, 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 zero, ten, eight. Forty two percent. I mean, it kind of looks like we were singled out.
Yeah, but it, it's not a non-presidential year, so you're going to come down it anyway.
Remember. Stephanie Penrose explained to you about, let's not talk about non-presidential year. We still got to do the same things. We still have to send out the same amount of ballots, order the same amount of ballots, have early voting, the same amount of hours. Danny asked Parmes, we are doing everything that we can. This is what it's going to cost. I'm not making it up. It's what it's going to cost. Don't defund elections in Trumbull County. That's all I have to say. And I just want the record again, the most important thing I had to say here was to clear the air. We are not out of compliance with Trumbull County wage and salary. We are not violating the federal labor standards law. Thank you, appreciate it.
Just for the record, you do recall, and I know, you know, we made some heavy cuts, but we did mention that. This budget isn't over.
Yeah.
Not only that. We are going to be looking at this.
Yeah.
Probably, well, that would be a month. I, I mean, down the road to see where the appropriate, where to appropriate monies. Where we're going to be able to take it from the re-appropriate.
No, Commissioner.
And I guess a lot of our reaction probably is when we had the first budget hearing. When the two employees were here, not a board member, and they said, they budgeted their raises for next year. Never said, well, raises started in June.
They're not races. They're not races.
Tell that to the public when they call and send email.
No, you tell it to the public.
Now, now, listen, when, when, when their salary is one thing, they could have denied themselves overtime. Their bosses, their supervisors, they didn't have to work overtime.
They did not approve their.
They could flex hours with those workers.
The Board of Elections, the Board of Elections. Bipartisan vote, unanimous. The Board of Elections, the Board of Elections bipartisan vote unanimously, two Republicans and two Democrats. We were in the process of, for a two-year period of restructuring ranges, job descriptions, roles, all those things. These were the last two pieces of the puzzle. We, we decided to, to help the county. Let's cap, let's, let's eliminate the whole variable of overtime. Presidential odd year, even years, whatever the heck it is, prime, let's eliminate that. So we know what it is.
Well, it's a busiest year, that's where you said.
That's exactly, but that's exactly what we get, Denny.
Not the lowest, you said the busiest year. The one year out of the four.
No, that's not, we, we looked at multiple years. We looked at W, we looked at W. We looked at W twos for multiple years.
Right.
Okay? We looked at W twos for multiple, the, the, our director and deputy director, this year will make a more or less, maybe a thousand or two thousand dollars over the course of what they've made the last three years. Portage County, they make $94,000.
Oh, go to the, go to the.
Mahoney County makes $94,000.
On the four-year average, what did they do four years in a row? And the presidential year they made the highest, that's where you set the standard.
Well, no, that's not where we set the standard. What we've done in this last presidential year, remember, this went into effect. Don't make an art, try to make an argument out of a non-argument, Danny. This, this went into effect in June of 24. So they have not had overtime since June of 2024. Overtime didn't come into it. It was a flat, a flat thing. So what, we really based it on 2023, which was not a presidential. So that's another misstatement. Please.
They're capped on their call time, correct?
Capped on their call time.
Compensated time for working overtime.
We're capped on all of it. Can't just, don't.
It's semantics, it's.
It's not semantics, it's facts. Don't twist the facts, these are not semantics. It's not a rage, we restructured the salary.
Listen, what we're going to do, Mark, please, Commissioner, let's, we, we've had the presentation. We're going to move on, uh, we don't want this to.
No problem, I understand.
Out of hand, okay? Um, but I thank you, we're going to look at this.
No problem, so the record straight.
And Commissioners, well, yes, that's what I like to see.
It's what you all see.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're running a little behind and I apologize to, um, we have KO Consulting here and I, I'm sorry, I don't know your first name.
Josh, Josh Press, yeah, absolutely. Kristen Oldby with, with, actually with KO Consulting.
Give us your full name and then.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, Josh Press.
Before we do this, right, the Commissioners, when we were down at the Commissioner's training, we saw that there's many other counties have grant writers, lobbyists that work for the county, budget directors, finance directors, administrators, deputy administrators. And it was proposed to us by various means. You don't need to hire a full-time person to do that stuff, there are consulting people that do this professionally. We met with their state reps and they told us about other counties. And they told us about the lobbying they get on behalf of counties throughout the state. And the grant writers that submit grants for different projects, like 911 centers like that. We don't have that person on staff per se for everything. We, we have Julie Green, her department economically, but there's, it was brought up to us that we may want to look at that. That was brought up to us by state representatives that, that, that might be a good idea for our county. And we looked at some other counties that did, including Ashbula, which has lobbyists that they pay that in the last Senate bill, they got a huge chunk of money for the size of the county they are. And a lot of it, when you talk to the Commissioners, was attributed to a lobbyist they had that was down in Columbus. On the ball saying, hey, this is coming up, this is coming up, put a letter in, put a letter. So we said, let's entertain to see what's out there as far as consulting companies that provide grant writing and lobbying efforts. So we've opened it up to invite a couple of companies, one this week, one next week, one the week after, I believe, to, to hear what's out there, there could be another tool for the Commissioners to use to bring in more money into the county from non-traditional means of what we're used to. So that's why KO Consulting is one that is, uh, works with the Chamber of Commerce and other entities. That's why Mr. Press was invited here today to be the first presenter to tell us how they can help our county. So that's, that's why we're at this point here.
Yes, not only that, Commissioner, they also said that we need projects that are ready to go. So, so they can help us. Um, we can't just go in and ask them for $5 million, uh, project. So we have to have, um, what's the word I want to use?
Scope.
Word. Well, yeah, design, you know, we have to have approved projects ready to go. So when we ask them for, they can go to the state or the federal government and say, look, they have a project, here's the design, this is how much it's going to cost, it's ready to go projects. And that's what I think we're kind of lacking that here in the county and, and that's, that's what we want to do.
And that's a free time with us a little too, we can put someone on a project to go chase bird dog the funds that are available, to bring them back to us. And I think that's what these consulting agencies maybe will do for that.
Just for residents, it does cost. There's a cost to it, but what you bring back is supposed to more than compensate for what it's going to cost the county to, and I'm not speaking, I'm not, you know, not going to endorse anybody, but it's supposed to compensate us back way over what we pay in grants and what, you know, and, and it's organized. It's, it's an organized procedure, so.
I mean, we know what we need, we need 911, we need Dog Pound, we need the Portage Office. And we know, we know what we need.
Okay. It's just another avenue we're looking at.
We're, we're endorsing.
Hey, I, I hear nothing. Uh, Josh Press with Press Public Strategies, so thank you guys for, uh, having us, uh, come speak to you today. I'll keep my presentation short, I know you guys were running behind today, but um, this background for myself, uh, spent 10 years working for Senator Rob Portman. When he retired and started my company, which is Press Public Strategies. We're a full-service government relations lobbying advocacy firm, based out of Cleveland, offices there, offices here in Youngstown. Um, obviously continued presence in Washington DC once a month in Columbus, more than I care to talk about. Um, but we, uh, so I have a partnership with KO Consulting, who Kristen Oldby is the CEO. She apologizes, send her regards, she had a family emergency come out today, she couldn't be here. Uh, she's more than happy to come and do a short presentation specific to her company again, if you'd like, but uh, we've been working together for several years now, I, I've gotten a really good understanding of her services, so. My background, we're a firm of, uh, three as of April 1st, I have one staff person at, bringing on a second person in Columbus. Uh, we focus on state and federal advocacy lobbying, so things like capital budget, um, which I know Julie mentioned coming up here at the end of this year and the state operating budget, which is something we're going through right now. So, then we talked a little bit about priorities, you mentioned, uh, Dog Pound, 911 Center, kind of here and today, a few of your priorities. A lot of those do fall under that capital budget process. Um, so it's definitely beneficial when you're working with your state reps and your state senators, having someone to go down there and work with not only yourself, your department heads advocating for those projects and kind of getting those things ready to uh, write up, to, to budget, um, you know, analysis for, and then kind of figure out, like the Commissioner says, what those shovel ready projects are. So those are the best kind of projects for your ready to go. You have a local match, state match, a federal match, makes that application more, more presentable. Um, and then at the federal level, obviously, Julie mentioned the congressional project funding, which otherwise no dis earmarks. Uh, those are in the process right now. Uh, the House and the Senate do usually do those. I know everyone has a great relationship with Congressman Joyce's office. Um, obviously, it's one of our two appropriators on the state of Ohio. Uh, that is really critical and key to go with them again for the shovel ready projects. Right now, it seems to be more infrastructure and workforce related for these projects, which sounds like a lot of projects you have that counties need of, um, will be attracted to appropriators in the future, so kind of helping you through that process. Um, the KO side, they're the ones who write those appropriations. Um, in addition to that, Kristen and her team of about 10, excuse me, 10 people now. Uh, they focus on local, state, federal and private grants. Um, so think international, national foundations on the private side. Obviously, federal grants through various agencies, which is an ever-moving target right now with the new administration, it's just a fact. Not sure what's going to be cut, what's going to be added to, so as we're kind of figuring out what the president's budget is going to be, we're closely watching that process to see what grant programs are going to be available in the future and what's going to be cut from the past going forward. Um, state grants, obviously, and then local grants, um, as well. Worked with several counties on CBDG, which I know you're all familiar with, uh, brownfield redevelopment grants. We've been very successful with some of our other clients, um, going after funds like that. City of Struthers and City of Campbell both, uh, do a lot of work with City of Gerard up here. Um, then on the private side too, a nonprofit, so Butler East and Berkenart, um, Honey Valley Historical Society, Community Correction Association, Honey County, we've been, uh, very successful in acquiring grants for them and also federal and state funds as well, so kind of an ever-moving target. Um, it's good to have someone, you know, worrying about that for you. Um, when you're talking with state reps, state senators, members of Congress, and who support the staff in Washington here locally. I know you all have great relationships with, with staff here. Um, Ohio is in a really interesting perspective right now because we have two new US senators, uh, who are navigating waters very, uh, uh, it's, it's a moving target, so a lot of people are hiring staff, both in DC, trying to understand that process as well, so. Um, that's kind of it, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, really open and looking forward to learning about what the needs are for the county. Um, kind of taking the success we've had with other counties, um, other municipalities, you know, forms of government, and then bringing that here to Trumbull County. Um, happy to go more in depth with that as well. Um, so is Kristen, again, uh, her team is fantastic, she's been doing this for a lot longer than I have. Um, but we make a really great team, so anything that she writes, uh, her team writes and picks up, I go and take that to legislators, lobby and advocate for that, with all you guys. Um, so, yeah.
What's your rate structure?
Sorry?
Your rate structure, schedule, how, how does that work?
So I am more, uh, based on a, on a monthly retainer basis, so, um, with partnership with KO Consulting, my services come underneath, come underneath her, so. Um, you could write a government relation services, so everything, uh, is at a specific rate for her. Um, and I can have her share that information with you guys separately too, but typically the process, what happens is she'll do something called funding readiness assessment with, uh, something that she has devised, um, with software that she has helped create to take a deep dive into your organization. And, uh, we'll work with you to identify all of your needs and then lay out a 12-month structure of local, state, federal and foundation grants that you will be eligible for, both on the operational side of things and the capital side of things. Um, that it will lay out deadlines, the needs for that grant, and then kind of a roadmap from there, then it's kind of an hour card option there on an hourly basis because, you know, state grants take 10, 15 hours, federal grants take anywhere from 80 to 90 hours. Foundation grants take five hours to sometimes 40 hours, so it really depends. Um, but the structure of a funding readiness assessment is really, it's a living, breathing document. You're able to go and click links, see what those grants will look like. And that will also include, um, options for state and federal funding as well. So again, think capital budget, think earmarks, um, anything sort of that.
How many counties do you serve now?
So we, I'm trying to think, so I'll have to go look, look back at Kristen. We, we haven't, uh, we haven't done specific work with, um, a county around here. Very municipalities that we work with, however, Struthers, Campbell, Gerard, did a little bit of work with Portland last year, uh, Village McDonald. And then, um, we interact with counties all the time for our other clients, so. We worked with Van Wert County, um, we represent a YWCA out there, we represent a YWCA and Alliance of Starr County. Uh, so we have great relationships with other counties and have a deep understanding of what, um, processes for that as well.
Just to be clear, let me just, excuse me, Commissioner. Just to be clear, so the process, it's identified, the grant's written, or the grant's whatever level, and then you take that and run.
Yep, so, uh, and there's two options, so if we can identify a KO consultant, can identify a grant, and if you, your team wants to write that, that's perfectly fine. Or if you want KO's team to write that grant, um, and work with you hand in hand to identify needs.
And you, and you take that to, on a state level?
On a state level, so, uh, for example, if state grant is submitted, um, say you need letters of support from your state reps. So I'm going out and working with their offices to gather that information, um, and then bring it to their attention. So we go down to Columbus, meet with their, their staff, or have them out to visit a project that's really critical. So for example, the 911 Center, having them out to see why this is so important is definitely, uh, a big aspect of this. They see firsthand why this is important and the needs for the county.
So you take them in the field, you can actually go and fill in the field.
Josh, can you tell me a little about your involvement with yours?
Uh, yeah, sure, so separately, um, not with my firm, but I'm the Director of Eastern Ohio Military Affairs Commission, so uh, we represent the airbase up in, uh, Vienna, just north of here. Uh, we work with Anthony Trevina and the airport to advocate for them, so. Something I've been doing for, for two years now, um, working with our federal partners, our state partners, obviously to support the mission at the base. Uh, bringing in different projects, uh, through military construction to the federal level on our National Defense Authorization Act, so. Um, a couple of projects that we've worked on in the past few years, our new front gate complex, which you might see when you're out driving on Kingsbury Road, uh, away from the base towards the airport. That was a project that we have worked on. Um, we're currently hoping to get funding for our new fire station, for the new C-130Js that are now kind of in conversion status for us. Uh, and we're, again, in the process of converting from our old place to our new place in the course of three years, so. That's something else in addition to my firm that I do is run that organization. So obviously keyed in with all of our local officials here, um, in northeast Ohio, but obviously supporting the mission at the base, which is the largest employer in Trumbull County. Still, I'm told, I think all team might be overlapping us here soon, but, um, definitely a critical asset to the region.
What was the value of the shooting range they put there, how much money did they bring in that range?
That was, that was a while ago, so I think it was around $9 million soul firing range. Um, my understanding is we still have several member, uh, standards, police departments where they come on base to use our practice facility, um, their trade, trading needs.
Those are the stuff where you heard, I noticed you were sitting, we were talking about infrastructure, talking about pulling in a treatment plant, things like that. Those are things, any lights going on in your head as far as thoughts and ideas of that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, a lot of needs, uh, or there's a lot of opportunities going forward with infrastructure. Seems to be again, the tune of our state government, our federal government is focusing on infrastructure projects. Um, I would suggest anything that is more shovel ready or you have a potential match for, uh, that we could leverage state dollars and federal dollars. And likewise, when they're going after these projects, uh, that's key, so. When you're, you're taken in line, say we're going after a capital budget project at the end of this year with the state, um, that application can be used to leverage our federal department. So it shows that there's potential buying from other opportunity or from other parties, that's really key when you're going after grants. Uh, you know, one thing that Kristen always says, we leave about $500 million on the table annually in northeast Ohio in grants alone. Um, so there's a lot of opportunities out there, it's just having someone to be able to help navigate that. Um, I am not a grant writer, that's Kristen and her team, I'm just a government relations individual lobbyist, but I've learned a lot about grants, uh, over the last two years, and it's definitely, uh, a very nitty-gritty process, so.
Just for instance, you know, Commissioner Prior and I were communicating a little bit here while you were talking. We have a Dog Pound, and I'm not saying that we're concentrating on just the Dog, but shovel ready. Spent 250,000, almost 250,000 on, um, architectural feeds, sanitary sewer studies, water, the whole bit. We have property that was given to us out of Vienna at AWL, right next door. Um, building is complete. Is that something that might be able to be, I mean, we had a discussion with Senator, you know, with our representatives who said, you know, like you had said, once you have that all organized, now you move forward with, you know, the monies to, to make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's something the funding and reassessment will look into and identify, uh, what's available for that specific, uh, project. You know, for example, there, you, you'd be amazed the amount of foundations that are out there in this country that have little specific, you know, um, issues that they love to support. And I'm sure there's a foundation out there somewhere in Texas that likes to support, you know, new Dog Pounds, new kennels. I mean, it's, it's, it's incredible the amount of money that's out there, especially foundations, but, um, in that case too, uh, specifically when we're coming up on the capital budget at the end of this year, when this application is open, that's something that's really attractive to the state, uh, is they like to be first money in or the last money in. Um, so they really want to start projects or more specifically they like to help finish a project. So that'd be, uh, I think a prime candidate for something like capital budget. Especially if you have other, other funds lined up, you're ready to go.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's very, I mean, that can be, that could come to fruition too. Like we mentioned, day of 501(c)(3), once you initiate it, those dollars can start rolling in. Is the match usual, or you get the grant, is there, uh, is there a standard to the match?
Um, it depends on each grant and each appropriation. Um, so for example, I mean, the operating budget of the state, that's, that's cash. Um, the capital project, the capital bill are bonded projects, so if you're approved for a capital build project, um, since it's a bond, you will do the work and then you'll draw it down for the state after, for the investment. At the federal level, appropriations earmarks, that is, uh, also cash heavy, so if you're approved, uh, you'll work with the, the specific agency that you applied through to create a grant agreement, and then you'll draw down the funds as soon.
And that's one thing Commissioners, they've got the institutional knowledge out and navigate that stuff and we can consider our time here. Task them with things, so they know the players, they know the ins and outs of budget hearings, the meetings, where to be, and I just relate with the Yankee like, don't use that as an example. We were number one in the state for one thing, and Yankees. We were number one in the state for one thing, and Yankee Lake jumped to the top. Yankee Lake had a lobbyist, and our metalwork project I put to the back is. Yankee Lake jumped up there for a little tiny little Yankee Lake. It jumped up to number one in funding in the state, but there was help from a lobbyist firm that did that. That Yankee Lake was smart and did that, and that's how they got funded, they have their sewer lines in yet now and metalwork doesn't, so.
Well, metalwork's under construction.
It's under construction, but but I'm saying that played involvement there. When you look at your sheet, you know, there's no reason why a little Yankee village or a Yankee Lake village should have got ranked the size it did statewide. There are things that come into play outside of our control, and knowing the game is part of the process, and some of these people know the game way better than we ever.
I agree, I think it's something that that's needed. I agree.
I do too.
We have a lot of projects here that only we know about, you know. State and federal needs, know what our needs are.
These guys are rainmakers, we need to plant the seeds and let them bring money on us by going shaking the clouds.
More turbulence.
Um happy to answer any follow up questions here.
Well, I I think we need, I think we need Kristen, Kristen.
Yeah, Kristen, yeah.
We I think we need to have more conversation with her and uh. I think we have two more coming in, and we could hire a couple of them.
Well, we learn from, learn what we want and then develop.
Yeah, we don't know where we're going, I mean, we know where we're going, we just don't know how we're gonna get there yet.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, well, appreciate the opportunity to address you all and uh nice to meet everyone.
Just have her contact the clerk.
Yep. Oh.
That's, you know, I mean, we're ready to go with something.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, you have a question for it?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, okay.
Commissioners, I would like to take the time to make sure that we're extremely clear on what was being said. Um I wish Mr. Albert was still here, but I'm sure he'll watch it, quote unquote, again, so. For the record, it's interesting for that they don't adhere to anything countywide they said, I think you heard. Mr. Albert said they can do what they want, they're not killing this board, and I also said that, if you go back to that meeting. I actually believe that I said that to Mr. Stevens, I think I looked at him and said, I understand they're on their own board and they can do what they want, however. Want to bring the attention to the board commissioners, if they're their own board and have their own wage scale, why are they on our wage scale? Why are they on Trumbull County wage scale? A, B, why do they adhere to the me too plus? If they want to do their own thing and be on their own uh schedule, then I I'm gonna say to the board commissioners, take them out of the me too plus. They can give their own raises, they can do whatever they want, they don't need to adhere to our wage schedule, is that correct? Because that's what I just heard him say. Uh Board of Commissioners, what I specifically said was. They're were not in compliance with Trumbull County policies and procedures, if they have their own policies and procedures, that's totally fine. However, our Trumbull County personnel policy is very clear, if you are an exempt employee, you are not entitled to overtime. Have we seen a policy that they have that says contrary to that?
And they forget they're using.
Oh, I'm not talking about that. Uh Commissioner, so. In absence of a policy where they don't say, where our board is collectively. Covered by, because we make sure that we have policies and procedures in writing. That if you are an exempt employee, you are not entitled to overtime, period. Under the Trumbull County policy and procedure, that is what I said. That is what I said, for the record. Beyond that. Who approves their overtime? Because I implore you to go back to the record that day and listen to the record where he says they approve their overtime. We have a policy here in Trumbull County where we have checks and balances, Lisa, can you approve your own overtime?
No.
Who does? Correct. Do I, would I be able to approve my own overtime? No, I would not, because I don't get overtime, but also even if I were to get overtime, it would have to be approved by somebody else.
I agree.
Now, this is the home Clarence era. People were allowed to make good arguments, he made a good argument, he presented himself well, and. He was loaded up to to make his argument, that's fine, but that doesn't mean all the facts are correct, it's one side of an argument. And I I do believe somewhere in there is. The public sentiment not being taken place, we're the stewards of taxpayer dollars, and they can do what they want, they can pay the director whatever they want. Within means, they still have to abide by the budget that they're given. And I think we need to look at comps of other coun- of counties, and like you said, borders does it for five hundred thousand less than them? I mean, how many less townships, how many less school boards do they have to deal with, is it five hundred thousand dollars more work? And we need to look at Knox, we need to look at Laking, we need to look at Medina, we need to look at them. A little better, I guess, now we'll look at and see what their budget is, but I do know what my argument I was making was, when they set the salary. It was at the max of the four year cycle, you got a year of trustees and nothing else, then you got state elections. Then you got a year of trustees and school boards, then you got the federal elections, so you got the presidential election. Granted, that's gonna be the busiest time, and I believe where they set the scale and they looked at it, wasn't the average of the four years. And the amount of overtime or work expended, I believe it was at the max it was.
Commissioners, I'm not here to speak towards that whatsoever, and again, I think that. I heard the board very loud and clearly ask them, another one that I wrote down too is, I heard the board ask them loud and clear to share their comps with you guys. Did they ever share these comps that he keeps stating with the board, or no? Has anybody ever seen the data behind, did you not ask them?
I asked, I asked them specifically to bring that in, they said that it was researched by one of the board members, that's who they came up with it. We asked for that data.
So we're trying to work with this, is what I'm saying.
Just the farm said that she would. Provide it, but I never got it yet, and then Mr. Albert, he was here last time, he didn't provide it either.
So.
But he said we're cherry picking certain ones, they may be cherry picking.
Commissioner, what I'm saying is, how are we, how is the board supposed to make an informed decision if you have not seen that, like that? That's my question to you guys in the board, this is not about cherry picking. This is very clear, if you don't have the information that you're asking for, how are you supposed to make an informed decision?
And so, bottom, the sticker shock thing is what scares the public, we're the stewards of the tax dollars, when they saw how much overtime and max dot com time. Yes, they worked awful hard there, every employee works awful hard there, and that's what my biggest. Beef, if you want to call it, is they've got outstanding employees that work there each and every day. And their bosses are making forty thousand dollars more than them, doing the same job that they do, and I think that disparity is what really flares out of me of. Of that person that's working hard, working their butt off every day, showing up for work. And then they come in and work hand in hand with the boss who may work more equal or less than what they're doing. That just doesn't look, that's the CEO thing we have in America right now, where someone's making hundreds of millions and then. The guy doing the work down there is making, you know, hundred thousand, you know, that's the CEO disparity. And they're not CEOs, you know, they're directors. And that thing, and I just, I think the way it was presented, yeah, we got off on the wrong foot, maybe a little bit by being caught off guard that there were. But there was a change, and then there is, you know, it opened our eyes, there's that much overtime going on and not flexing time, not working within the work week to. Adjust the schedule to not be in an overtime situation, but if Lisa came to me. And we saw that Lisa gave herself twenty thousand dollars in overtime last year, I'd be pretty pissed, if you came and we heard that Alex gave herself. Or Mike Salomon, he gave himself twenty thousand dollar overtime, I surely might could be shown the door, um if that were to happen.
Well, they can, because there's there's policies and there's a process, that's my bottom line at the end of the day. That we do have policies and processes, I guess, I understand that they can have their own. And.
But they're still living off taxpayer dollars that we're stewards of, and we set the budget for them.
Well, here's the problem, if if they want that million dollars back. Again, we just found. That we may take a million or two out of their reserves and we're right back where we're at right now, no further ahead. You know, I mean, so, once again, we have to ask everybody, please work with us, you know. Everybody's gonna have to cut it a little bit, right?
And you can be within one percent of your budget, if you if we double their budget, they can make it so they're still within one percent of what they what they budgeted. By allowing the amount of overtime, by allowing people to work more, just because they're at that, doesn't mean.
I just want to be clear.
It's a whole time for them, I mean, there's some things that I'm sure that they may be able to do now.
Sure, I just want to be clear.
That, you know, when it becomes, you know, election time, sure, they they need all the people and all the hours, but. What do they need now, I mean, I don't know.
They had trainees, he said they're not gonna be able to train, train right now, there's nothing else going on, train, they're in the middle of summer.
Commissioners, I just want to be clear, because, you know, he keeps throwing out human resources, which. That's lovely, um human resources stance is very clear. I, first of all, it's not personal, it's it's a matter of fact, you are required to fund elections, period. So HR knows that, HR has always said that to you guys, but what I've also said is, is that. We also do have policies and procedures in place for this county, not one department head, and I can guarantee you this, because I've done the math myself. Not one department head, not one director in this county. Outside of what we've seen here. Must follow policies and procedures of Trumbull County, because again, do you get overtime, Gary?
No.
Do you get overtime, Lisa?
No.
Bill Danson, do you get overtime? Oh, really, do I get overtime? Guys over there, I know you're brand new, but do you get overtime, was that not explained to you when I onboarded you? Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Salamone, do you get overtime?
Yeah.
Do you get overtime?
No.
Don't lie.
No, I'm sorry.
All right, so anyways, I think that we've made the point very clear. But I do believe in funding elections, so to to try to say, I think we all do, so I think it's very unfair. To come up here and say reckless comments when HR has said nothing, but these employees do deserve everything. And then some, however, that is within within public means and within budgetary means.
Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
Um. And like we said. Evidently now, this budget, and we set numbers, but it wasn't final. We've got some things to look at, we've got some appropriations, reappropriations to make to certain departments, and the commissioners will. Delegate what we feel. Ultimately, we can delegate to those, well, with with our means. As to those departments that we can delegate that money to, and some are not still gonna be happy. Maybe others will be happy, but the bottom line is. We have what we have to work with, that's what we're gonna have to continue to do until, and then as we see the numbers come in. And we look at this down the road, we can always reallocate. Right? Any other, anybody here?
I've got a couple of things.
Mike?
Sorry.
Sure.
Uh first, just want to let everybody know, the WRTA. Will stop running the two big routes of Warren, which is seventy four, seventy three, the Elm Road. As of May thirty, they're. Um city of Warren has already said they're not paying money yet, I know the commissioner not gonna pay no money yet.
Warren's not.
City of Warren's not, no, they already said, they they already said it's not two months ago.
Yeah.
So, these two routes are done, the Warren Express will continue, which is their per question. But those two are not, so. Just that why, so that helps a little bit.
So Mike, we get the hundred and thirty thousand back that we were contributing to that, correct?
I don't think so.
Well, I I not that, but we're not gonna be extending it going forward.
We might be extended anymore.
Okay.
That's what.
But those.
But those routes.
Routes, they're not gonna have. Right.
Well, one one of the reasons I'm doing this right now was. I do know they have what they call an ADA content, they're trans, and I go to them. So anybody that isn't uh ADA or ten older or disabled, they can start applying the Trump contract. So, the ones I've ever heard would be the general public. Right, but they do know, like uh last time, I just said some of the numbers, they had, let's say, forty trips for ADA. Thirty trips, so, it's not a lot, but it'll still be a few. We'd be able to take them, and again, I don't know how many actually ride that are sixty and older. So if they're sixty and older, our program is for anybody sixty and older. So.
So when that service stops, they should call us. The mayor's office, the mayor's office, I mean, they don't call us, who who would they call?
They call me.
They're probably going to call.
They're probably calling the board of commissioners, but the bottom line is, there was no more funding this project.
And the state doesn't have their half, so it we'd have to fund the whole thing, probably.
Well, yeah, we did fund the whole.
The state gave three hundred thousand last time and a grant, Warren gave one fifty, we gave one fifty, the state's up with the three hundred up. That's probably one warrant, so they're not gonna take it.
Right, Warren. Plus, I already know that uh every graduate writing a grant, uh he here has still even written a grant to this, so. That's just want to let everybody know, but if you get calls, send them to me, I'll see what I can do to get them through that system. What's that? May thirty. Uh the other thing is, tomorrow, I'm having a transit meeting at two PM at the Warren Scope Center. I've already done a public notice for this, so if the commissioner want to come, it's up to you, but you don't have to. Uh this is a public meeting, we're getting just transit topic. Uh this is something that um a little bit, a little bit about a year ago. Uh Mark Joseph's coming in here, a few other people, you'd ask me to start a transit meeting. So that's what this meeting is, something that's continuing on. And uh there'll be some things I'll be talking about, but a lot of stuff you already know, I'm definitely bringing up some to get.
I think we have two or three meetings.
Yeah, what time is your meeting, Mike?
Mine's at two o'clock.
Oh, okay, or is it or is it seven in the evening? Yeah, just shorting up schedule here, commissioners, we have the authority at two tomorrow.
Yeah.
Then we have the public hearing at at uh seven. Then on Thursday. Um. There's a EMA executive board meeting at nine, which all ten. Friday, Texas Center Review Council, I've got two different times on here, Lisa, can you check on that? One says ten, one says eleven, and we have to kind of pick who's gonna be our. Representative on the Texas Center Review Board.
Oh.
You got the nicest office.
I think it's true, see, I think it's the president, uh.
You should hear that.
Should do that.
Huh? Did you hear, he said president, where? Oh, really? That's what he said? That's wonderful.
This is the last night you have with that word.
We won't decide tomorrow who's going to that.
So the last thing I have, I brought up before was the CDP grant, I have gone to one of the public meetings. I will be applying under Trumbull County Commissioners for the CDP grant for transportation. My understanding is, I, trans can get um. Fifteen percent of the total, which comes about seventy thousand, eight thousand. That's what it would be, so that's what I'll be applying, so I just wanted to let you know, I will be applying for it, I don't know how far we'll get through the system or whatever. That's a really great question. Yes, I uh, thank you, Mike.
I can give some questions from the earning staff.
Yeah, I want you to introduce them.
I would like to introduce them, if you would let me, thank you. Uh Board of Commissioners, Harland and Daryl, please stand up. Welcome, this is Daryl Donegan, he is our special projects facilities administrator, and Harland Jones, who is his assistant uh facility supervisor. Um again, we are more than thrilled to have them, in the past week, I have seen an exuberant amount of. Pride in what they want to do and what they want to accomplish, uh we have also, just commissioners, so you're aware, worked through their budget and took their budget from an anticipated six point five million down to four point five. So we cut two million right off the top last Thursday, sitting down with them. Um literally, I'm gonna throw them into the fire as I was thrown into the fire, because you know what, that's the only way to learn from the ground up. Um they are doing a fabulous job, work orders are getting assessed already quicker, they have changed the process in which work orders are being handed out, so really good things coming down the pike. However, they are still new, and we do still need to foster them and 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 help them understand processes, policies, procedures. Um and in general, commissioners, I. The vision that you want to see this department head in, I think I've done as much as I can up till now. Um but they do still have questions on things, and and to which they have here with them today. Um as we're in budget restrictions, as we see right now. They have questions on, and I'm glad they do, on what the commissioners want the scope of things to be. I think what you're gonna see moving forward is that they are going to come to you with informed. Informed cost analysises and decisions, and they will bring that to the Board of Commissioners and ask you as a board. How you want to spend the money, and is this truly where you want to spend it, and if so, so be it, but they're gonna keep you way more abreast. Than having, you know, change orders pop up, things pop up, we're we're trying to get ahead of all of that, so Daryl, I will. Turn it over to you, my friend.
All right, so for example, uh what Alex brought up. Uh when I came in, there was an issue with the boiler at the jail, uh there had been some uh. Quotes or proposals brought up, uh we had those redone and dropped the amount significantly. Uh it's still thirty eight thousand dollars to to replace it, um but that's about twenty thousand dollars less.
Yes.
Um so, in light of that, rather, prior to uh the maintenance guy working on that project was calling out and getting quotes. Um we're taking that back, and we're gonna be handling those between Harland and myself and uh. Reaching out to some contacts that we know and been dealing with in the past, and getting better pricing. And and making sure that. And and making sure that it's everything that we need.
And it's just very important for us to alleviate this much call out. Um, and overtime, saying that we're in a position to handle those calls. Um, there's no particular reason why. Staffs again began paying. With their union, of course, you know, their contract, on just picking up the call. Uh, we could do that as well, we could assign duties as we see fit, so. Um, with the structure of the facility, with the buildings as well. We are going to try our best to alleviate costs on repairs, but one thing you said, if. We cannot, if we could buy the cows instead of buying the milk. That's gonna help step in. So, that's one thing we're in a position to do, so. It's time to go and you'll see a big difference.
No, please, don't keep listening. So we got one, we only have two, but you guys, I wanna thank you. I put in an order spur of the moment, they got done ASAP, now. The only difference is, I'm above Commissioner Hawaii Bernard.
I feel good about that.
Did you see the sign? You'll see it.
Did you, did you powerfully make them raise your sign up?
I had to, I mean, but um.
I'm sorry?
They took my side, somebody took my side.
They took your side?
Well, they took yours to put your name correctly.
Oh, okay.
Your name was spelled incorrectly.
So Danny, I heard your spot.
That's.
Yeah, we could get a a list of who's supposed to park where and, I mean, it it helps a lot, so.
But I I just. Right off the bat, I'm gonna give you both an ad a boy first.
It does say, whoever's got the tallest sign goes to Texas Center Airport on Friday.
Um, so Daryl, the answer you need, commissioners, he needs to know about, he needs a approval or okay on the boiler, it's thirty-two thousand.
First of all, thank you.
What's that cut in his half?
The jail.
Jail, I mean.
Well, can you, Daryl, I don't wanna explain, I know the answer, but I would love you to. Can you expound on what the boilers needed for? And how many there are.
So there are a total of five boilers in this location, currently, there are only two working.
Sorry, what location?
Uh, at the jail.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
This, this particular boiler actually serves the kitchen in the jail. Uh, so there are requirements for uh.
Sanitation.
Sanitation, uh, foodware, uh, silverware, that type of thing, it has to meet a certain temperature. And currently, um, with the boiler setup now, they're not able to reach that. Uh, so this is definitely needed and.
Yeah, boy, the first of all, the commissioners, we know, we've been pounding a ton of money in those boilers. We can't continue to keep, you know, just pounding money in an old dog, so, and I don't mean, I mean.
There you go.
There you go.
I don't mean to, but. You know, um. He's wearing up on me. But uh. I think it's necessary and.
Where were the funds coming from?
Wait, I get my spin.
He has an answer, where is?
It was fifty-eight thousand.
No, we're training him a lot.
Uh, so that's from fund number fifty-five oh six.
So what's that?
Actually, I'm not sure.
Do we add that?
Fifty-five oh six is uh. Oh, I had it, Commissioners, uh, five-five oh six, Daryl?
Yes.
Commissioners building, building repairs, so they have a, right now, at, they're well within their budget. There's five hundred thousand dollars anticipated in that uh, area, so. Um, the problem right now is we haven't passed the final budget, so he's on a temporary budget, so that's why he's bringing this to you, because right now, technically. He'd be incurring money that. They don't have, because you haven't awarded them the money yet.
But what you're saying is by you just revisiting it, you saved twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Twenty grand.
Wow.
That's, that's a big, big, and an ad a boy, I mean, it's great.
Where have you been?
Um, so there's one more that you would like to present to the board?
So the next one was presented to me when I was, this is at the jail as well. Um.
Administration office, though.
Administration office. Uh, so evidently, the heating and air conditioning isn't adequate for. The sheriff's office. And. They were requesting a mini split put in that office. Uh, again, this is another one where the quotes were. Started out at ten thousand dollars. Um, after we revisited it, we got that down to sixty-two fifty-five. And that would be funding fifty-five ten.
Plus the twenty-eight hundred to run the electric.
Right, fifty-five oh six and fifty-five oh ten.
So would you be magical to get all these down, I mean, it's just, I mean, two items there and.
Well, so I I I think you have to let these contractors know that going into it, look, just because we're Trumal County doesn't mean that.
Right.
It's an ever, you know.
That even sounds a little odd, I had my whole ass done with four mini splits, and I was at like seventy-two hundred price. So, run the beast on. Where they are from one, we're looking at one office?
Well, is this the office where they were getting sick, where then?
No, no, that's.
No, and twenty-two eighty of it is to provide electric for that, which is a separate contractor, the. The mini split installer doesn't do the electric.
Right, but how much is the mini split itself?
Thirty-nine seventy-five.
Right. So the whole total cost is sixty-two hundred dollars, the thirty-nine plus the twenty, twenty-eight, right-ish?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I mean, the Board of Commissioners can always, they're they're bringing it to you, if you guys wanna do the project, great, if not, you're just gonna have the sheriff.
Well, it's gonna have to be done, right?
I mean, it's in this building, why, why is the air conditioning that provides us? They consider that separate?
It's.
It's in the jail.
Oh, in the jail?
In the jail.
What office is it in?
It's in the administration, it's the sheriff's actual office, it's not in the jail, it's attached to.
The administrative area, sheriff's area.
So the sheriff's office, I guess, was built on, I guess there was a. It was like an addition.
It was an add-on, after the fact.
And the last two sheriffs didn't, didn't bother them?
No, but. That's not my, that's not my, that's not for me, so.
How did you, how did you become aware of this?
Uh, we actually went building to building, that administration in each building, and they were over there.
We're there, right.
They pointed some things out to us and. And then I had found that this had been voted. When the new administration came in.
So what we're finding, commissioners, is that. That, and I actually did a little research before they came on, so we could preemptively stop this process from happening. Somebody puts in a work ticket, silly dude, or asks for something. And the staff would just go, okay, so they would never stop and say. Should we be doing, they would never stop and say, how much does this really cost, I don't wanna say never, I don't, never, never say never. I'm sure that there was times, but we have found quite a lot of examples that I can just tell you, working with them amongst the past couple. At least the last week that we found carryover from before. Where I was thinking, wait a minute, I never heard this brought up since Board of Commissioners, I never heard this brought, I mean, I'm not. There is some, of course, administrative, you know, once your budget's set, you can absolutely, you know, it's done within your budget, but I'm talking when we're going over budget areas. The board needs to be informed of what projects are being worked on and why. And really, essentially, if it's over a certain threshold, we're really should be making that decision, because it's your, it's, it's. Funds that we're expending that could be expended on something else. So, this new um. Administration has been tasked with. Stopping the staff from just saying, okay, right? And and really looking into, did we get three quotes, did we change, did we look to see if we could reduce the cost? Were we, are we succession planning in, can we sustain that cost going forward? I mean, there's multiple aspects that that they've been tasked with, and they have a lot of work to do, and and we're still thrilled to have you. And you guys have been a pleasure to work with just thus far, um, but. This is gonna be a new concept for the board, because I feel like this is how it kind of. Needs to be, so we're making the best, most informed decisions collectively as a board, so there's no surprises. For example, sheds popping up at the fairgrounds, fences popping up at the fairgrounds, I mean, I don't know if that's what the board wants. Did it, did the board approve those things, I'm not sure, but we're seeing the monies coming. The bills, so we need to be, we need to. Yeah, get ahead of things, be proactive.
Well, I don't wanna. Brain on a freighter, right now, we're talking, still doing the budget stuff, I don't know if that's. How much of an issue is that, that the last two sheriffs worked in there in the same conditions? I worked every Wednesday with a heater in my face and radiator on my ass.
What's your opinion? How critical is that, I guess I would ask?
With this winter being as cold as it was, their windows, his windows are, they have plastic wrap on on the windows to help keep some of the air out. Uh, but again, this, this past winter was probably one of the coldest ones we've had in a while. Um, and with summer coming, I actually think it's something we could put off.
That's good for me.
But we do have to look at it, because we, we put a ton of money in, in the, in the that system. Later on down, I mean, I'm not saying right now, but like.
Right, yeah.
Said.
If it's not critical now, I mean, we got till next winter to to address it.
Exactly, and we'll have all the information ready to go when, when uh, that time comes.
Of course, I don't know if those costs will go up, or if they'll escalate or de-escalate, I don't know.
Yeah, typically, any, any proposals we get are good for thirty days, so they, they are subject to change.
Just another thing to keep in mind, I don't know.
Well, you can tell the sheriff, we said yes, but you said no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, commissioners, you're, you're, you're using desks, things like that, so it isn't like we're not cutting back in ours. I've got no new furniture in my office in two years. Uh, and you guys have any of the absorbed old stuff?
I got French cause paint. And desk. Not the chair. Not the chair.
That's a bad food.
Well, commissioners.
I mean, yeah, just letting you know, right now, it's, it's not critical. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Um.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Um. Commissioners. We also have a, a little bit of a snafu, um. Unbeknownst to anybody here, we went to go, so the Board of Commissioners, um. Houses the mail center, if you will, for for us here on the fifth floor, for H R, Board of Commissioners. Senior uh, transfer levy, senior levy, transit, maintenance, uh. And what we do is we each pay a fee, so I pay, I know this, so I audited. They pay, I know they do, so we audit it. We get invoiced twice a year, semi-annually, for our meter percentage of what we use for the mail machine down in the clerk reports. We are sitting on a stack of mail right now. I I know, that's just yours, okay, there's. Yeah, so we are sitting on mail that we have been told we cannot use their mail services any longer, even though we were paying for it. Um, I questioned what we were paying for them, because if we're paying for a service, we need to get that service, and the answer that I got back was. You were only paying for your meter percentage, you're not paying for the lease of the machine, you're not paying towards the ink, you're not. Pitney Boggs is the, is the company. You're not paying towards any of that, and I said, well, okay, then why don't you just raise our percentage of what we're paying, we'll gladly pay that, I mean, I don't think anybody here is saying that we won't pay the percentage of usage. Um, but the answer was no. So we are now in a little bit of a conundrum. Commissioners, we have, it's a union job duty within your office, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, where. The union employee in your office does mail. We will now have to send that person. To the post office every single day, walk, ride, don't care, whatever we need to do, I guess. Down to the post office, but our larger issue is, we don't have cash on hand. So we can't just take money, cash money over to the post office to pay for these things, okay? So we are now a week behind in mail, um. Literally, getting, I mean, you can see the stack's gonna keep growing, H R has to send out certified letters all the time. Um, I'm sure Mr. D'Anzo can appreciate that and understand that, we have legal things, requirements that we have to meet. When I have to serve somebody with a critical area hearing notice, if they're on administrative leave, so on and so forth, it has to be certified mail. Um, again, we pay for that, but. What, what we have right now is a little bit of an issue, and we truly don't know how to fix it.
We sent an email Friday.
Yes.
We got no response?
No.
Well, this is something, we're talking here today about cooperating, we're talking about finding new money. And if we got players that don't wanna cooperate and play with us, they don't wanna come to the table, work for the good of the citizens, Trumal County. I I don't expect.
They may, who do they send you to?
I have no clue, but I do know the auditor has their own mail machine, uh, and the court reports has their own mail machine, I'm not sure who the prosecutor uses. They have their own.
Can we run ours through yours for now?
I was gonna make a joke, I won't make a joke, uh, I I'll check and see if we can do that, I I don't know how that all works, I've never done it before. I don't, I don't really do this stuff, but we can look into that. And see if that.
I mean, also I'm asking is, we will gladly pay.
At least temporary.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'll, I'll check and make sure, I I, if, if, we could probably work something out with that, I don't.
Commissioners. I've made four phone calls. To clerk reports. I've talked to Devon Stanley. Who didn't wanna be involved. I made three. Three, two. Three phone calls to. Uh, Randy Locke. Lisa, you sent the email, no response. I was hit with a very nasty letter coming out of the elevator the other day. Calling you cohorts. I think they're, that they're not working. I mean, I can understand the budget. But I do have an issue when I'm handing a letter coming out of the elevator. Reprimanding me. For, I won't get into the, what the reprimand was about. But it was very petty, you read, you read the letter, Commissioner.
You read the letter?
To call you two cohorts? Is being, yeah, but I think it's being, it's petty, and it's, it's just, um. It's gotta end. Let's work together to make it work.
I heard something this morning about the passport office.
There's a sign that they're showing though.
There's a sign on the door.
Whatever, and and again, jumping the gun, not working with us on things, we got new money, I mean, that's. You know, they want. More money coming their way, they want us to reallocate more money coming their way as we find more money, that's not the way to do it. So it's absolutely not the way to do it.
He has a million dollars sitting there.
That's right.
It is, it is.
That's taking it out on your employees, using them as human shields again. And playing that, look what we're gonna do to these people, we're gonna scare them, we're gonna make them hurt, so they come to you and. Bad mouthy in the press, bad mouthy.
I mean, I, I mean, I.
We're not gonna play that.
Personally, I don't know what happened, the last time. Works was here, he said he worked with us here.
He was the first one here that sort of said, whatever, over.
I had the scene, but I don't know what happened, but evidently something's happened, you know.
Oh, commissioners, at the end of the day, all I know is, we need an alternative solution to send our mail out, so.
We can, we can look into it, yeah.
Okay, thank you, yes.
What I wanna find out is, I guess, Bill D'Anzo Prosecutor's Office, um, everybody probably knows my voice now, but um. What we'll have to look in, I, there's probably a way to differentiate.
There is.
Between different codes for different, keeping track of different postage, we'll just probably wanna check into that.
It would be a temporary. Yeah, temporary fix.
I just, I don't think it's behoove of the county right now, or no offense, but when we're talking about how we get better together. I don't think it's behoof of the county to have a seven thousand dollar mail machine for each floor. I mean, what are we thinking, why can we not all help each other, work together, leverage services, isn't that what we're here to do on the public servant's dime? We have to work together, I've said this three times. And it is very, it's very hard for people morale-wise too. When I, I, the, the whole office was very upset on Friday afternoon.
Sure.
When, when one of our union clerks went to go down there to mail something and was told. We're no longer doing mail for you anymore, how, how does that help bridge this gap?
Doesn't at all.
So, we, I understand budget cuts were made by the Board of Commissioners, again, don't take that out. On every single public servant here, just trying to do a job for the, for this county.
I agree, take it down.
Get onion for that, right?
Take it out on. Don't take it out on our employees.
Problem, he should come over and meet with us.
Yes.
At least, like you said, you know, you called him four times.
I would meet with him personally, face to face, that's the way to meet.
Let's work it out.
Man, I, I was just, when you called. And Lisa said, hey, we're having a problem, they're not doing this. Uh. It shocked me, because Mr. Law was the first one that stood there and said, I'm more flexible, whatever, I'll make it work, whatever, I'll make it work, I'll make it work.
He said that multiple?
Multiple times.
I don't know what happened.
Yeah, but like I said, this scaring employees and jumping the gun on this stuff is the way to go. You know, we, we had some cuts, we knew we were gonna have to readdress things, now, as we have to readdress it. You know. Some people are gonna have to go the back of the pack that aren't cooperating.
Well, I mean, we're gonna try to help everybody, but we only have X amount of dollars.
Commissioners, when are, when are you guys getting back together, because again, I'm here to remind you of the impending deadline of three twenty-six. So.
First thing we need to know, we gotta get an amount and then reassemble and do it and divvy up.
What's everybody scheduling?
How you doing? Do you want to do it this Friday?
I'm here Friday.
What time Friday?
What time's the?
Tax meetings at ten. I'll do it afternoon Friday.
Well, that that tax meeting, let's take that. Which, probably half an hour. And thirty, say maybe eleven.
Unless you want to go into next week, but then you're looking at.
I mean, I'm not here to tell the board what to do, but I I would try my hardest. Not to let it go into next week. Commissioners, you still have to remember, whatever number you revise, you then have to still get back to the department heads to go in and implement the budget, so.
I mean, if it's Friday, it's Friday.
Say Friday. I'm gonna be here seven o'clock maybe. Well, I'll do, you wanna do like eight, eight thirty? I'll come in eight thirty.
It's still eight thirty.
Yeah, but if we do have this thing at ten, we're not gonna be able to get this done in an hour and a half, you think, do you? Because it's been lengthy.
We have an amount, we can divvy it up pretty quickly, I think.
My only ask is that if we can, please stop.
And that meeting is in this room, so. To be done.
If we can stop the spin until there's a final budget. I I'm I'm hoping everybody, obviously, people like to listen to what you say, so I'm hoping that everybody who's listening to this out of clear. We, the Board of Commissioners has not passed a final budget. So if you're still looking at numbers, please, everybody just. Try. I know that it's tough. I know this is tough to remain calm. Let, let. Get through the, get through the numbers and then. Sit down with everybody and figure out. Where we need to cut, lay off, if we need to, if we need to, and that should be a last, last.
There's, there's no we. I know what we're doing in our department. It's up to other elected officials. And to decide what they're gonna do with their own.
But I'm just talking on the best of Trumbull County in general, not just the Commissioners.
There's a we there. I don't think that, we're not at that point yet, and I'm not gonna say we're at that point. You know, if there, if other people want to use that as scare tactics. That's on them.
Well, I think they are.
Uh we know they are.
So if we meet on, or if you guys meet on Friday, you you need to have some sort of ID on that reserve.
Yeah.
Time before that.
We do.
Um so.
Is it a million? Is it a million and a half? Is it two million? Um I think it's a good idea to talk to John. OCA, oh.
What's OCA?
CCA.
What is it? OCA. I'm OCD right now. I'm not OCA.
So what time? We talk Friday?
Um. What do you want to do?
What time is, what time is your meeting?
Ten.
It should be over by, what do you think?
Yeah, I think so. They're usually around that.
Start at eleven?
Fine with that. Is there a better time for you on Friday, early or later?
It doesn't matter. It is, this is important.
What, you want early?
No, I I could do whenever. It speaks at eleven, eleven is worse.
Whatever time, cuz.
It should be done with your meeting, brother. You should be done with your meeting, brother.
And we do, I mean, you guys do need to kind of get to the, wrap it up, so you can let the departments know and elected officials and everybody, everybody's kind of on, you know, edge right now waiting, so. It would be very helpful.
I gotta get. We fill over employees, we're gonna do the best we can with the taxpayer dollars. And that's what we're elected to do, is be responsible with the money. There's nothing personal in this process. Every department needs and should, we shouldn't have to be told by us to eliminate waste, eliminate. Uh. Abuse in in any way, and we just need to tighten. Tighten up a bit, and then when we do that, we'll evaluate and see where we're at. We need to figure this out here too.
We're getting beat up. Every department, I mean, we got, we got this.
Well, we know it's gonna be, you know, this isn't a now problem. This is next year, five years, ten years. Prices are going up. We have to set the standard of how to govern correctly with increased costs in the world.
Gotta keep.
There is no finish line on this race. You know, this, this is a marathon. It's gonna last into eternity. Forrest Gump run.
Another one. All right, Commissioners, can we have, anybody else? Raymond, did you get enough?
I have a question or two to ask, but.
Are you gonna sum it up?
I don't know.
Oh. Okay.
He probably um. The amount of paper he's using out there, they're probably, their budget.
They cut the budget, yeah.
We have a motion, Commissioners?
We.
Motion.
Motion in the yard.
Second.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.
Yes.